Alright, we're all set.
We're good? Oh, would you say yes?
Yes, we are all, yeah, we're live.
Alright, great. So my name is Paul Tegner, I'm the Chair of the Northboro Zoning Board of Appeals. It is November 26th and past the hour of 7:00 PM. This open meeting of Northboro Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and remotely, consists in the Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, relative to setting certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northboro Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed to participate either in person or remotely. The Act allows Northboro Zoning Board of Appeals to meet in person and remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the votes in agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the livestream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northboro Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Alright, so first up on the agenda is the consideration of the petition submitted by Ted Gillett for a dimensional variance for insufficient frontage for a proposed addition to a single-family house on the property located at 68 Shady Lanes Avenue, MAP 76, Parcel 43, in Residential C Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Lay Protection overlay District Area 3.
Hey guys, thank you for taking a few minutes to review this. We're just looking for some, at least about five and a half feet of relief for a family addition. We want to put on a, or we want to extend out the living room, and as his family is growing, he wants to add some extra space. So he plans on staying in town, so this is the reason why we're doing this project. They've been here for, I think, since 2013, so they want to remain in town and like to see if you can make a decision on this, so we can add on to his location and his family.
Okay, so can you just confirm the actual amount of three feet you're looking for?
Yep.
It's five point five point four six feet.
And I believe that's because you're already encroaching into the front step back, so it's five and a half additional feet from the encroachment that you already have.
Correct.
So the way that I wrote the decision was the total encroachment, not just the additional.
The total of the 30.
Total's eight point three.
Eight point three.
Okay, so the total is eight point three?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, do you have any comments to address this?
I'll see if I can.
Okay, I assume all the plans and stuff from the respective did anyone on the board have any questions or comments with regards to this dimensional variance?
I did, I did have a question about, our building inspector has a comment about needing 15% increase to impervious surface worksheet. I just wanted to make sure that you're satisfied if that's been done, if it's resolved or how to resolve that.
That usually comes at the time of building permit application. Typically, it's not involved with the ZBA, but on the interpretation, typically what I do is I try to put on there everything that they happen to face with that they may not anticipate.
Just making sure that's not something we need to be worried about, in your opinion?
Right, Laurie, did the town receive any letters in favor against project?
Nothing.
Okay.
I do have one quick question for the applicant. I think I saw in the application, something mentioned that there had been some other neighboring properties that had done similar extensions of their house. Is there any specific ones that that could have in mind that we should, that we could focus on? Or I'm not super personally familiar with these treatments. I just wondered if there was any more specificity that we could provide or do have general commentary?
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have it with me, but there was a house, I think two or three homes down from him that just put on some additional work. Yeah, I don't know the, I don't know the number, Shady Lane, there's two houses. So they're kind of on where Leland hit Shady Lane, right? So I suppose they would probably be somewhere around 71 maybe. They just went through a big addition in the last year or so. And there's also a couple other houses in the neighborhood that have gone up recently, one on Pine Haven. There's a bunch of renovations going on in the neighborhood, lots of different things.
Thank you. Jack, why have you chosen this location to do the addition versus another area where you may not need a variance?
So first, first I will say, we were not aware of, I guess, the event.
Yeah.
The event, so when we actually hired an architect before we even started this, we factored in the 30 feet, right? So we already kind of came up with plans and everything, and then we went to town for the original. We found out, I guess it's 10 or 11 feet onto our property throughout the whole road on Shady Lane. And I even asked many of my neighbors about it, and they were, they had no clue. They were like, we've been here forever.
A little bit more than we thought, yeah.
We've never heard of this. So we actually went in with the mindset factoring that in and kind of coming out to where we could. We don't have a huge backyard, you know, I mean, our backyard's fairly flat, it's usable. If we went back or we went side, we just, we couldn't do much with it. And our front yard is actually just a hill straight down. So it's not really usable for the kids, there's not a lot you can do with it. So we kind of figured that's a great way to just sort of go out. And the weird thing is too, like our neighbors across the street, and they're not doing any work or anything, but they've been there forever. I, I mean, they have a very small driveway. I would almost even argue that where we end up is further away from the room than they are now. There's not a couple other houses that are smaller ranges on Wood Lawn, which is two roads over. That, I mean, you could literally, you know, roll the Coke can to the front door from the road and they've been there forever. So I still think we'll be further back than there.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions?
I just have one concern, and that is, as you mentioned, your front yard is steeply sloping on the site plan. You can see that there's a retaining wall. So I was concerned about how this addition will impact the topography of the land. So one of the comments that I made is, I'd like you to submit a grading plan that shows existing and proposed contours. I'm not sure if you're going to have to reconfigure your retaining walls to make it happen. So, but I, I'm suggesting to the ZBA that they include that as a condition of approval. And that before you submit a building permit application, you submit a grading plan for us to review. And that would just be a staff review, as well, and it wouldn't have to go back to the ZBA unless they wanted it to.
I actually, we, I have submitted, we, we talked after, and we decided that replacing that retaining wall was necessary just to, to keep the yard stable as we put the addition in. So we, I've already submitted plans and paid for the permit for the retaining wall.
Oh, okay. So Bob, you have a grading plan then?
I have a grading plan.
Okay.
It seemed like you.
Maybe, maybe you can just share it with Josh, the Assistant DPW Director in Marissa.
Sure.
So we all have it in the file.
Okay, that was part of what we wanted to do anyways, because the visual aesthetic, it's an older wall. So to do all this work, to make the house look really nice and everything, to leave that would have been terrific anyways. So we knew it was part of it all along.
Thanks.
So this is a public hearing. You are dialed in via the Zoom link. If you could please click the raise hand icon, or if there's anyone here that has any public comments. Please come up. Have their hand raised? Ready to confirm that?
Yes, no hands raised, the Zoom call.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from staff? Are there any other additional questions or comments from the board at this time? Okay.
Okay. Made a motion to close, 68 Shady Lane.
Second, Brad made a motion to close the public hearing, and it was seconded by Jacob. All those in favor? Alright, alright.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I have one question for you, just for the decision, what is your name?
Chad.
Oh, wow.
I think I saw that. Yeah, thank you, yeah, thanks Laurie. Thank you, guys.
Next up on the agenda is the consideration of the petition submitted by Allstate Glazing Limited for a special permit, site plan approval, and special permission in the Groundwater Protection Overlay District to allow the operation of Auto Glass Replacement Fitness on a property located at 130 East Main Street, Building A, MAP 47, Parcel 16, and Residential C Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay District Area 2. So I think for this one, before we hear from the applicant, if I could just, from staff, get, Laurie, you had made a comment about your opinion with regards to whether or not a special permit of site plan approval is needed. I was wondering if you guys had a consensus on what is actually going to be for this decision?
We went, we went back to the books and discovered that site plan approval is not required in this situation. There's nothing that he's doing triggers either pathway that requires approval. Of special permits, yes, but not the supplement approvals.
Okay, great. Cool, so if you guys want to start, just kind of give us an overview on what it is you're looking to do and.
My name is Nick Frye, I'm the Director of Allstate Glass, Ben Shelleyton, and one of the owners of Allstate Glass.
And our President, I think we should call that.
Thanks.
Thanks for your time tonight, we appreciate it. We've looked at locating our central mass facility to 130 East Main Street. And Allstate Glass is a 30-year-old, 38-year-old, excuse me, registered auto glass company in the state of Massachusetts. We originally were based in Weymouth and currently are headquartered in Holbrook. We have also locations in Stonem and current location in Worcester, another one on the south. And so, love your town, it's a beautiful little area, and we very much look forward to working here if we can get approval. The location that we've got, that operates from Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturdays by appointment, we'll have one full-time office employee and a onsite manager. And we have three mobile technicians that would work out of that location. And this is not just to service Northboro, they service basically a territory which encompasses many of the local towns here. So they'll basically work from pretty much Worcester to the Framingham area, and then north and south about 10 to 15 hours. So they're typically, on a normal workday, the guys are in for an hour or so, they load up their truck, they leave the building for the day. When the weather's inclement, we do work, try to work inside, and this particular facility has enough room for us to warehouse glass, as well as work inside and replace that glass. We don't do any heavy mechanicals, there's no motor work, no transmissions, no bodywork, nothing like that. It's all specific to auto glass replacement. On a rare occasion, we may have a vehicle stay overnight, but that would be parked indoors. And for the most part, the only thing that would be outside of the building would be a dumpster for rent. Aside from that, there's really not a lot that we have in the way, and I guess the questions that have come up have been mainly over the chemicals that we would use in our business, and rightly so. It's okay with you, I did bring a few samples, and I know the term sizes or household use sizes has come up in a couple different discussions. Basically, all the products that we use, basically some packaged in single-use or multiple-use packages. And we don't store any drums or anything, there's no tanks, there's nothing technically that can really spill or cover an area that would be invasive into, let's say, the sewer system or anything else. In this particular building, there's a fireproof room that we will use for storage that has a six-inch ramp against the inside of the door that would not allow anything to spill out. So everything that would be contained, as far as any storage, would be contained right in that room. And as I mentioned, it is, it is fireproof and leak-proof at this time. Generally, if there's any spills, the only thing we could really come up with as far as any kind of issues with MSDS would be with the petroleum-based products that we use to glue the windshields in. And typically, the only real requirement to control those spills is either a sawdust or floor material. And again, they're very small, this is the urethane that we use to glue the glass in. It doesn't really spill, you'd really have to work to get this stuff out of the tube. Generally, the whole tube is dispensed, of course, just your normal glass cleaner and W40, things like that, are also easily disposed of as well. The other components of the installation materials come in very small cans. We keep very small quantities of those around. And so again, we're conscious of trying to again maintain a good handle on all of the chemicals that we do use. And we do use a grinding powder that we use to polish glass, and there's really no environmental impact from that. So at that point, again, it's just going to be primarily a Monday through Friday business. We do, again, stock glass onsite, windshields specifically. And right now, I think we've got about 600 parts of plastic in 20.
600 windshields?
Correct.
Okay. Could you take us through sort of like the layout of the property as it currently sits?
Sure, yeah, in this particular building A, we're looking at 4,800 square feet, it's an 80 by 60 spot. The majority of that is just a warehouse space, it's just a big open garage. There's one overhead door that allows access of vehicles into that site. That's where the warehousing will be done with the windshields. There's a small office with a adjacent bathroom, which will have, again, a customer service representative there. Spot for, you know, customers to wait while their vehicles are getting worked on. Generally, when we replace a windshield, it only takes about an hour. And so the customers, generally, we don't stack them, they come, spend their hour there, they leave, the next customer comes in. But honestly, the majority of our work, probably 95% of it, is done on a mobile basis. So it's only really when the weather's inclement or cold that will be required to work indoors. The rest of the building, there was actually a paint booth that was constructed by the prior, or the current owner, who operated a body shop out of that building for many years. That's also contained with its own overhead door. That is the area where we plan to do the installations inside, there is water and air ventilation in that particular space. Off of that, there's several different storage rooms, generally, you know, eight by 10 feet, and a couple of air compressors that are existing in the structure that would feed our space as well as the adjacent space next.
Okay, so there's a couple proposed conditions for this case. You know, work on the vehicles within Building A should be limited to propose the application, meaning obviously doing all your window windshield glass repair, I assume that that's not an issue, you didn't mention that.
No.
There's no exterior storage of the auto glass or the materials, I think if this diagram sort of lays out sort of where things are. And I assume that this glass installation base, where you've been doing any sort of indoor work.
Yeah, that's correct.
You know, permit to store that has materials should be taken by the fire department. I think the fire chief submitted a letter, right?
He did, with some conditions of approval that I forwarded.
Yeah, right, I assume that there's no problem at all. You mentioned the dry, dry fireproof locked rooms with the six-inch ramp. This, can you just describe a compressor in this suppression system?
Or? Yeah, the, I'm not aware of a suppression system, to be honest with you. These, I know there's sprinklers in the building.
Okay.
There's, the air compressors themselves were existing units that the owner had had in the building to operate his body shop with. And there are two of them in that particular room there. One of them feeds one side of the building, and one of them feeds the other side of ours. And those are electric air compressors. I'm sorry, I don't know the capacity, they're a good size.
Okay.
So I'd say 100 gallons would be my guess, but they appear to be in good working order. I haven't even used them, to be honest with you, we probably won't use them all at Ollin, but they are part of the structure.
And I think the fire chief had mentioned the suppression system, sorry.
Yeah.
That was decommissioned.
Correct.
That's something that you guys don't have an issue with?
No, sir.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant? John?
Thanks for coming in tonight. As far as the, getting rid of the old glass and the like, you're proposing to put it in a dumpster?
Correct.
And then is it secured overnight?
It is, yeah, the dumpsters are covered in the lot.
Okay.
And generally, in most cases, they're empty weekly. And we've got a current agreement with the seller, the rest of our locations.
Sure.
With the supplies.
Okay, and then just so, most of the work that you're going to be doing as far as the installation goes will happen inside the actual room.
Correct, yes.
There won't be anything going on in the parking lot?
Nope.
Okay, Jacob?
I know, I might have missed, and it may just not be relevant to your application at all, but the other existing building on the property, will you be occupying that, or is going to just continue doing whatever it's been currently doing?
Correct, yeah, I think it's an auto repair shop.
Yeah, I think that's Building B is the repair shop. I think Mr. Mandela, who owns the building, I think he just uses it for general garage use and storage.
So we should, as far as what you all are proposing, it's not correct when we're using that building?
Correct.
Are there any other questions or comments from staff?
I have no one, just to clarify. How many dumpsters are we planning on having?
Just one.
One, and that's going to contain both the glass and the regular trash?
Correct.
Okay, is the glass recyclable at all?
Unfortunately, there's no facility in Massachusetts that can recycle the type of laminated safety glass that we use, unfortunately.
Okay.
Jack, sorry, I stepped out, just a quick question.
Sure.
When did the auto body shop close?
I want to say it's been over 10 years.
So the building's been vacant for 10 years?
Well, not, and I can't really speak to its use, other than what the owner has told us, and he's used it for storage. When we got to the building, it was empty. And, and I think that, you know, whatever, I'm not sure what he stored there, I've got some old cars and collector cars, things like that, that I think are on the other side of the building. But for the most part, I think it's been vacant. Still in great shape, Ben.
Any other questions, you want? Alright, this is a public meeting, so if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, you can please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand icon. If anyone's here who wants to speak. So you, I guess just a, while we wait, you'd mentioned the hours of operation were 7:30 to 5:00 PM. Would a condition for limiting the hours of operation to like a 7:00 to 7:00 have any impact?
No, sir.
Yeah, okay. Right, you want to confirm, be able to see any hands raised?
Yep, no hands raised, okay.
Can I say that?
Yeah.
When you said that there would be like, no, it wouldn't have a great impact on sound?
No, 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 there's, we use a few power tools, but really nothing different than an electric drill, to that extent.
And all the work, we prefer to do all the work inside, so we close the doors after we, you know, pull the vehicle in. And truly contains all the sounds, so, yeah.
Right. Are there any other questions from staff?
No.
And then any other questions from any board members? Are there any questions the applicant was hoping we would ask?
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay, thanks for asking. Okay.
Shirley McMoone, please to hear it for 130 East Main Street.
Okay. Right, made a motion to close the hearing, seconded the motion, all those in favor, to close the hearing? So you have a decision?
Thank you guys very much, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you.
So next up on the agenda is a consideration of the petition submitted by Henneke Henne for the use variance for operation of a home occupant business office for a mobile dog grooming business within a townhouse on a property located at 27 Solomon Pond Road, Unit C, MAP 30, Parcel 29, Residential C Zoning District and Groundwater Protection Overlay District Area 2.
Hi. Hello. Okay, thanks for having us, and you're welcome. Allowing the attorney to present the case. And now, my partner actually is here, I'm here, I'm not on the game, my name is Ukesh. He's online, can he be allowed to speak?
Yep.
Okay. He's named as here right now, this person.
Hello?
Yeah.
Alright, can you guys hear?
Hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alright, good evening, everyone, thanks for the opportunity. So yes, we are starting a dog walking and mobile dog grooming business, which requires me to park a van at my home and run the business from home. For van parking, my fellow HOA owners have approved for me to park it at my designated spot in the community. An approval later is attached to the application package you have. I have also attached a picture of front and back of my unit, that, the front of which shows the parking spot. Again, this is my own designated spot. I need to run the business from home, for which I have applied for this variance. All I need is a laptop and a phone line. Running the business is really similar to working from home. There will be no customer visits on the property, because my business model is to drive the van to their home, to the customer's home to groom their pets. At the end of the day, the van will be parked in the indicated spot. That's the picture, that's an example picture of the van. Most likely, that's the same one I'll get, but if not, it would be very similar if it's a different brand. And at the end of the day, the van will be parked in the indicated spot again. So there will be really no impact to neighborhood traffic. Lastly, I'll need to store maybe a couple of bottles each of dog shampoo and conditioners at home. Anyone who has a dog at home likely has similar shampoo conditioners. I'll have about a gallon size of these in stock. The SDAs for, for these are also attached to the application package. So all in all, there will be no adverse impact to the neighborhood, to the traffic, because of the fact that the business will, and in fact, the business will generate jobs for groomers and dog workers in the town. And I request you to grant the variance to run the business from home, which is, which is a townhome, a townhouse in my case, not an independent house. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Yeah, so I guess my first question is, can you just describe sort of your, maybe like the day in the life of your business operation?
Sure, so assuming I have, let's talk about maybe a year from now, when I expect the business to be all like running to full capacity. So in the morning, the van will be parked at my home. The groomer will come over, which I'll hire from our neighborhood. They will take the van to the client's house. I book my clients online, either they call, or they use, they will use our app and make reservations. So my dog groomer will go to the client's house, they'll start in the morning. At the end of the day, come back, park the van, take their car, and go home. By the way, the, the brand name is Woofies, it has about 50-plus franchises, franchises now nationally that have been awarded, and it's a growing pet grooming brand name.
Okay, so will they, will they, will there be any dog grooming done at the townhouse on Solomon Pond Road?
No, unless one of my four owners say they have a dog that they want me to groom, at which point they will really be my customers. So maybe a couple of, once in a couple of months, again, if they've, if they really want to. But otherwise, there will be no other customer visit or dog grooming onsite at my townhouse. Inside or outside.
So once a dog groomer goes out to a site, or to a customer, and obviously there is, you know, hair or other, you know, soap suds or whatever you want to say, what do you do with all the wastewater and trash?
Yeah, so, good question. The gray water dumping, I have not found a solution for that. The gray water dumping, I have not found a solution for that, I will need to find one for that, I have been, I'm talking to a couple of businesses around the town, uh, but I have not found a solution for that yet.
Sorry, you, you don't have a solution for the, the water?
For the gray water, I will not dump it in the sewer, uh, sorry, the, but the plan is maybe, I have two options, one is find a business in the neighborhood that takes, uh, uh, soap water, uh, for example, any nearby, uh, car washing businesses. Uh, the second option is build a, pump a line into my home sewer to dump the water. Uh, these are two, my, these are two of my options, but I have not finalized either of them, one of these rather.
Uh, so I guess, uh, just a question for staff, um, so what's in front of us today is this applicant wants to operate a home occupation business office, right, so sort of the, um, laptop with a telephone wire, I think is how he described it, part of the business and storing his vehicle onsite.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that the only thing that's really within our, I mean,
Well, the thing is.
Obviously, like, there's, it, it sounds like there's going to be no dog grooming business, obviously, he's not going to have any dogs at his house, per what he said. Um, so this is not like a dog grooming business or veterinary type of, of situation.
The, the, the base of the, uh, variance is that home occupations are allowed in a detached, single-family owner occupied home.
Correct.
This is a condo. So that's the first thing you're looking at. Second thing is, you know, the use itself, understood that it's a telephone and a home office situation, but it still has a commercial vehicle in the property. Typically, a commercial vehicle is not a big issue, uh, provided it's, you know, not a henry, it's, you know, there's only one, you know, again, home occupation still says that you're allowed to have one commercial vehicle, you're not allowed to have one or two, um, related employees, I mean, there's a whole raft of regulations go on with it. Um, but the, the, the base thing is, uh, variance because he's in the, that he's not in a detached, single-family dwelling. Okay, the other thing I would, you know, I, I just want to put out is that, um, the wastewater situation, I think should be dealt with. Um, you know, originally, the intent was to drop down a storm drain, in which time I said, you won't do that, um, you will have a whole raft of people coming down on you, including the authorities. Um, so, um, ha- having that not been settled yet, I think is probably needs a little more discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my question.
Thanks, boss.
Based on that, is there a, um, resolution for that? Is, do we make a decision tonight? I know, put the cart before the horse a little bit, but, or do we just wait to see what he comes back as far as a solution to that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think that's one of the things.
Yeah, we just make a stipulation, if we make a decision.
I did include it as a condition of approval, I, I know he had a conversation with the D P W director, I did as well, and he said that he would be fine with the disposal of the gray water into the sewer system if it was done via fixture that is located within the dwelling unit. So I did include that as condition B. But it sounds like that's kind of up in the air at this point.
Can I put out just a question, and perhaps you may know the answer to this? I know in some sewer treatment plants, there's an opportunity for people to drop off like gray water, white water from like their motorhomes.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if that would be a viable alternative for you, whereas before you go home for the rest of the day, you swing by the Marlboro Treatment Plant and drop off. I don't know what the fee structure is or anything like that, I, I don't know, I'm just wondering, so that might be something worth considering.
And you get, I don't know if you want to speak to, I think you did speak to one of the neighboring towns, right?
I did, um, and while, uh, there were two things, one is they don't, uh, have the infrastructure to take, uh, gray water from a tank and just drain by gravity, they'll have to pump it out, so I, I'll have to rather make an arrangement to pump it out. And secondly, I was also mentioned that, uh, it's more for the people from Marlboro, and obviously, I'm not a resident of Marlboro, so I think that was the other reason why I could not use it.
Can I ask a question? It's, it's, I mean, because mostly it's, you know, most people own dogs, you know, the only difference is the quantity, like typically, we do five to eight groomings in a day. So you'll have a larger quantity than a typical homeowner will wash and, you know, dump it in a seafowl, it's, it's not appropriate to, no, we are anatomically conscious, but is that an option to, if we can figure out a way to dump it in the seafest?
Uh, I mean, yeah, I think it, it, it's an option to stipulate, um, something like that.
Sure.
It would have to be within the dwelling though, y- you can't have an exterior connection into the seafowl.
Yeah. Um, well, yeah, oh, yeah, um, I, I know this isn't completely relevant to this case, but since you're in a condo complex, where's the condo complex think of this? This business?
Uh, and you can maybe, we'll speak to.
Can you, can you ask that again, please?
What, what, what have you heard from the condo association about the business?
Oh, uh, they are okay with me running the business, they are okay with me parking the van. Um, yeah, they, they have no issues with me running the business from home, in fact, they were surprised I could not use my home, my townhouse as my office.
I think I s- I think I saw a letter signed by your neighbors, is that right?
Correct, there's a copy attached.
So, yeah, right, I, I think what I would say is, you know, this application, right, is not to run a dog grooming business at the townhouse, right, it is, so he's not storing, he's not having dogs come to him.
Yep.
And those dogs in his condo, right, he's simply, to, uh, Bob's point, running the business with a computer locked up and phone wire and parking his commercial vehicle at the townhouse, and therefore, it is a home occupation business office, which is only allowed in single detached, this is a comment. So regardless of what he's actually, you know, what he's doing, whether he's doing a dog room business or he goes and cuts people's heads or something like that, right? Um, I think it is an issue that he needs to come up with a plan to figure out what he's going to do with that wastewater, whether that's relevant to this specific application and use variance, I guess, is, is a question, right? Well, I mean, I think we need an answer to that before we actually make a decision. Right, because regardless of, I mean, obviously, you can't do anything illegal, right, and just dump it down a storm drain, but he has to come up with a solution that is viable. Um, and we could include that as a stipulation that needs to be approved, a sip- a solution that's a, um, you know, could be approved by
Town staff.
Town staff? Right, that is legal and appropriate?
Because we have to work, Scott.
Okay.
You know, will be appropriate.
Yeah.
You know, what, what, what kind of fixtures are you looking for?
Right.
You know, where, where can be located with the building itself?
Because, I mean, you know, you can bring all this stuff on without negative strain. So. So that's kind of what's before, Jake, sorry.
Yeah, quick question for the applicant, and this is part of the puzzle, I agree with everything the chair is saying, uh, on the wastewater, part of the puzzle that we're assuming is, I guess, in these mobile vans, this franchise company has contemplated, there is a way, I'm assuming, maybe it'll help us understand if I'm wrong, there is a way where you're capturing somehow the gray water in some tank of some kind, I'm just, yeah, small mind of mine, I'm picturing, you know, our little vacuum cleaners we have at the home, they have the clean water tank, and then they clean the stuff with it, and then it ends up in the dirty water tank. That's not what I'm suggesting you have, but I'm guessing you have some kind of system that takes your clean water and then captures it in the dirty water, and what we're talking about is what to do with that tank of dirty water, right?
Yep, that's exactly what I see, clean water tank, and that goes, you know, to the gray, the gray water goes in there, all leaves water.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah, so that, is, since the gray water's being captured, and we're talking about where do we put it, it seems like a pretty solvable problem. Uh, my, my, my bigger concern would be if we weren't capturing the gray water in, in the first place, um, but it sounds like that's not.
That's true.
Yeah.
Uh, Jack?
On the same note, my concern with the gray water is in, in, it's because of the condo association. So we have a letter from condo associ- condo owners, you know, which we don't know who signed it, so, I, you know, just because it says that the name is signed, it doesn't mean the name is signed, um, but it's a, it's, that sewer line is servicing five units. Um, so if he gets it set, you've got everything going into that line all the time, water, air, you know, what's the maintenance of this line? Because we're not looking at just as how, you know, single family detached house backing up, we're looking at five condo units.
I think that's, uh, separate lines for each unit, is that correct?
I don't know, but I would assume that it's, it would be separate ones, okay.
Y- yeah, I, I actually, I don't have a copy of the picture at hand, but these are all separate lines for the five units. Uh, and the hair, uh, so inside the van is a bathtub in which the dogs are bathed, and the hair is captured in a separate filter, and it's, so all particles, for that matter, are captured separately in a filter, and it's only water that flows through it and is collected into the collection tank.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, it's, uh, there'll be minimum hair outside, but, thank you.
Um, I'm just reading the, the letter from the other condo owners, um, anybody that does have their names on here, it has A B D A on here, so, um. I guess the question, is, does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, sure, I would just, I would just note that it, it just talks about most of the parking there, it doesn't talk about any sort of gray water disposal.
Right, 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 okay. Um, are there any other questions from the board to the applicant, so I guess, as a board, you know, two things, A, are, are we comfortable making a decision with sort of open items that are out there with regards to this case? Do we need some more clarification on the gray water? Um, or do we need more clarification on sort of the residual impacts of the business operation as it's currently disposed? Um, then, you know, I would suggest that we not close the case, so I think we'll leave for a place, an answer, or if we are comfortable with putting some sort of stipulation or condition that sort of leaves it to town staff, then, if we can move forward with that, a decision. So, I don't know if anyone has any.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, from, from my perspective, if, if the applicant doesn't have any further questions or input for us, if we were inclined to include as a condition that the applicant comply with any relevant, uh, this isn't verbatim, but comply with relevant wastewater disposal regulations in consultation with town staff, if the applicant would be okay with that, it doesn't feel like they need to provide more information to us, then I would say, I'd be, think we can close the case, but that's just my opinion.
Right.
Yeah, just to keep it even generalized, the match is to, that the, essentially, if they're coming in here, if it was a dog grooming business or an accountant sitting at a desk just by himself all day, that's a business, but the business apply, adheres to all health code standards and the like.
Right, and that's obviously, Lord, just to confirm something that's from words from your team.
Um, so I have a letter B, I could expand that to say, um, subject to the approval of the building inspector, is the.
Not the building inspector, D P W director. This involves wastewater in the sewer system, I really gotta have, Scott, or somebody from D P W involved there.
Whatever the plan will be, if they submit a plan to you, and then you guys can take a look at it, Scott.
We don't have this slightly.
Um. Does anyone else have any other?
Yes.
Is that, um, I guess then the question to the applicant is, um, do you have any issue with those conditions submitting a plan for any gray water, whatever, whatever your gray water plan is going to be? Do you submit a plan to Bob and to Scott for, for their approval?
Yeah, that sounds intense, okay.
Um.
And I'll just add the words, if disposed of onsite, so that way, if you just, if you find an alternative option that allows you to dispose of it onsite, then we don't need to worry about it, but you still need to let Bob know what your solution is.
Okay, yeah, that's okay.
And so just to confirm, there will be no, obviously, you know, uh, dog room services done onsite, and obviously, um, keeping dogs overnight?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, um, I guess the other um, conditions that are on the, the draft decision, um, two. So it's like, the, the chemical storage, uh, for the dog room business, can you kind of just confirm where?
Yeah, so what you're talking about is just the toothpaste, um, the conditioner and the shampoos, these are the three basic things that we'll use. They are, yeah, no, I was surprised too, uh, so basically, and all the chemicals listed in there, most of them are also used in the process, so these are the things.
Then they, they'll be stored in the mobile trucks?
There'll be, there'll be, like, I think it said, we might have a gallon each of, then stored in the garage, that's about it, so we can refill it in them.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions from the board to sign, all right, so this is a public meeting, um, if there are any members of the public or people online, uh, who wish to ask a question or comment, if you could please raise your hand. I take it from, uh, the feedback I got from the board is that we are comfortable with, we have all the information from the applicant at this time, and putting stipulations or conditions in place, um, where we basically use sort of gray water issued up to town staff people, is that fair?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Brad, can you confirm that there's no hands raised?
Uh, yeah, there are no hands raised.
Okay, any questions? Uh, are there any other questions from, uh, town staff?
Don't worry.
Okay, any other questions from the applicant?
No, you're good, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Simon. Yeah, Mr. Chair, like the, uh, motion to close the public hearing for, um, a modification of twenty seven Solomon Pond Road, Unit C.
Okay, that's, right, the motion, you know, seconded by Jacob, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, Mr. Assistant.
Okay. Great, awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Um, so up next is the consideration of the petition submitted by V H S Trust for a modification of site plan approval and a use variance to allow the operation of senior living facility with a proposed decrease of twenty-two long units, proposed increase of picture repartments bases, associated modification on the property located as thirty-nine dash forty-three, King Street, Mac eighty-two, parcel thirty-one, Business West, Village District, and Ground Architecture Overlay District area. Um, so the personal question I have is for Laurie. Um, and that's more of a procedural question than anything else, um, so I assume that the fact that this is a, um, a use variance application, that this will be a new decision and not a modification of old?
So the variance is a, um, well, the whole thing will be a new decision, but, uh, the variant will be new, and then there will also be a modification of existing tools.
Okay. One time.
So the variance, um, it, so what he's interested in doing is changing the use.
Yep.
Uh, so that will be a brand new application.
Okay.
Um, but then he's also modifying the old decisions, uh, to reflect changes in parking configuration and numbers and number of units and landscaping, yeah.
So i- is the, is the site plan changes from prior decisions enough to warrant a new decision?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So he is significantly increasing the number of parking spaces.
Okay.
So now he's, uh, proposing to put, what is it, sixty-six parking spaces under the building?
Yes.
And then he's, uh, changing the number of units from eighty-eight to sixty-six.
Okay. So I guess about, to bottom line is, this is a brand new sort of decision. Looking at the use variance as its own thing, and then obviously the site plans, um, or especially from the site plan.
It's a brand new decision, however, like I said, it's modifying, so there was the original decision that was issued in two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Then that was modified in two thousand twenty-one, and now it'll be modified again.
Okay.
So, yeah, Chair, my name is Rashid Che, I'm the trustee of the CHS First. Um, I'm a local developer engineer, um, in Shuuburi, that's from North Borough area. And with me, I have Bert Cory, who's the head engineer for DGP Associates. He's also actually from North Borough and, uh, long term resident of North Borough and they have done a lot of projects locally. So, um, I thank you for your time. Honestly, uh, it's interesting that I'm still here talking about this project. So I just want to, because to be honest, this could be very confusing or very easy, because I have done a little bit of research. And if just, if you just bear with me, honestly, I think, uh, we're gonna make it very simple and very easy. So first of all, I just want to show in twenty eighteen, uh. Twenty eighteen was the project, uh, and you will see whether, yeah. So this is what the project looked like in twenty eighteen. Uh, this was originally approved for sixty six units. This the project look like in twenty twenty one, so basically, no difference in the uplift and flow. The only thing really changed in, uh, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one very quickly.
Can you move back to the other side, please?
Um, I apologize, I thank you, sir. That is really, you would mean, I didn't even, sorry. So basically, in the twenty twenty eighteen, this is twenty eighteen, this was sixty six units, um, you know, assisted living. In twenty one, because of the, you know, changing, uh, you know, needs and changing, uh, economics dynamics. That basically any bank we went to and they talked about, that basically it's not efficient to run, you know, that small facility. With those type of, you know, uh, services we, we are going to offer. And we came and we, we had some conversation with the sewer department and North Borough Sewer is always, you know, difficult, but, you know. We thought that with paying some fees, we would be able to connect to the sewer and we came in, you know, twenty twenty one and board was very gracious to accept. And to make a long story short, we were, uh, we were approved for eighty eight units and then from forty four parking to fifty five parking. Which is roughly speaking, point five, half a parking per unit plus some employee parking. Then basically now, uh, as we were, and then we had of course COVID hit and all that and there is a lot of time look. Big, uh, a lot of time took, especially because, you know, there was a stipulation of getting the mass DOT permit. For curfew, we are going to modify the King Street a little bit, because the King Street at that point is kind of very funny. And the site visits were not very good, the board and the neighborhood all said that if we give portion of our thirty eight King Street. Which is in the front, uh, and we leave out the King Street, they would be very happy and the board made that appeal as well and we. We started with the mass DOT and then we started with the town and we sent sign member and of, of understanding, bear in mind it to DS. Okay, and then unfortunately, we have that COVID hit, unfortunately, I also had a heart attack, so some major health issues. And then when we started, uh, we were hearing that this was a sore, you know, when you come in, North Borough is on the gateway of North Borough. It's really not a very good situation, some people were just, you know, going in, we never entered, there were two homes there, but some business, some home. So we actually demolished and we started building a pad and then we started starting with that bench and all that. And then we realized two things, number one, this facility, the way it's approved, it would need a sewer connection. And we realized that the North Borough Sewer is in a, you know, very tough situation and connecting that would be very, very difficult. And then the second thing really is, and if we go with Saptic, then we have to go back to sixty six units. Because it's a ten thousand gallon, it was approved already for ten thousand gallon, yeah. Which is sixty six units about, yeah, it's about nine thousand, you know, gallons we needed in there. So we said, okay, instead of just going back with a different number, let's go back to the original number, let's help out our town resources. And then the other thing in that was, we heard from the fire department and other department. The one biggest issue we had in Coleman is that basically a lot of cars because of the memory care and the nursing care. So that's exactly where I think I can simplify everything and there is, uh. That right here. So basically, then I started doing some research and saying, what exactly are we doing? And when I did this research, honestly, it came to me very clearly that almost every single town. North Borough, other than North Borough, Shrewsbury, West Borough and Lemonster, who has these type of facilities. If the facilities are more like independent living facilities, where they do not offer healthcare services directly. And get paid directly and do a third party, uh, you know, healthcare services, then it's more like an independent living. And the executive office of elderly affair does not really require you to have a license. But if you offer direct services, then basically you have to go through the certification of executive officer elderly affair. And then I have done a large survey, talked to a lot of seniors, I realized post-COVID realities and also talked to my bank. By the way, my bank is hometown bank and I did share the ladder with, uh, with Laurie and Bob. That they also are the same one who are offering the loan to, uh, Brooks Pond in Lemonster, which is building. Six hundred fifty unit senior living facility, okay? So that was a good case study for me, I went and visited, I looked at the Lemonster bylaws, I look at Shrewsbury bylaws, I look at the, the, uh, West Borough bylaws. And I took at these five facilities, so there is a Highland on Main Street in West Borough, which has hundred twenty four units. Then you have Villows, which basically have the assisted living, the nursing care and the independent living. So only the assisted living where they offer deeper services and the nursing care require the license. The independent living does not have license. Then I took at the South Gate in Shrewsbury that also have school campuses, uh, seventy five units or so are assisted living. And hundred sixty one or so are independent living, hence independent living does not have license. And also the Lemonster facility, six hundred fifty units, which is not all built, it's about seventy percent built, thirty percent still left to build. They also do not have any licensing from executive office of el- elderly affair. And I even spoke with the executive director even yesterday and she confirmed that. Now, why am I doing this? Because there is one striking difference between North Borough bylaws and. Uh, in, 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 in all other towns and that's the reason I'm here, sir, otherwise I honestly don't believe I will. I will be here by, for changing, lowering the density. So you give me no flash that to lower the density, because you won't see builders coming in for lowering density, because that's gonna tremendously impact. Our management efficiency, but do I really fight with a sewer and, and put more constraint on resources? Or do we really fund something, go deal and help the town and, and try to do something which is kind of good for everybody? So, uh, I've heard from North Borough, Shrewsbury and West Borough all, the towns love, I talked to actually the town planners as well. Town love those facilities because they do not take any resources. And hence they basically, uh, offer very good tax system and these are also the people who are kind of our age. I mean, a little older, who offer, you know, who like to give back to the society and there's no rental problem and all that. So this is also a new trend where basically you offer these, you know, facilities. But then you do everything else through third party management, where the resident manage directly. Now, instead of paying ten thousand dollar a month, which is LCB Shrewsbury is around seven to ten thousand dollar a month. You are paying only three to four thousand dollar a month, because you don't have those overhead and you only take if you need it, okay? So then, uh, so, so the biggest difference I want you to understand is that the only difference North Borough. And, and Shrewsbury and Lemonster and West Borough bylaws has, North Borough is the only one which says the assisted living. Those which are licensed by the executive office of elderly affair. So if we continue building, then we, we will, we're not planning to get the license, it doesn't require to get that license. And we do not want to offer those expensive services directly. So basically that was, that would be like, that's really the first reason we came and I, you know, I, I, I thought it's for the administrative change. Uh, and I, I came in, Laurie first and Laurie said, no, this, this, this is a huge variance. So we respect that and said, let's clear that out in the board and let's get that. Then the other things is, you know, while differences, so I just want you to know that it was actually fifty five parking approved outside. Now we are going from fifty five parking outside to forty six, to reducing the parking outside. Yes, there was no parking in the basement, there were actually memory care units. We took out the memory care units, which, you know, of course, the, the fire department was very happy, because those are the one. Do you know, require a lot of resources, a lot of, lot of cars, we took that out and we put extra parking. Now this bring me to really the most important topic, the watching of the parking. Unfortunately, North Borough bylaws does not have the parking load for anything but multifamily. The senior living, independent living, uh, assisted living, no towns consider them as a multifamily. No town does that, because they want to attract, this, uh, you know, even, even the sewer requirement. Uh, Saptic requirement is not seen for senior versus a regular multifamily. So if I look at Shrewsbury, I look at Lemonster, I look at, uh, West Borough and that's what this study says, that basically. Shrewsbury have one parking per two dwelling units for independent living. Uh, and, and that's, South Gate has, uh, South Gate has, uh, hundred sixty one units. Uh, South Gate. Okay. Where is my South Gate at, I'm trying. That's Shrewsbury, South Gate, it has hundred seventy one independent living units and it, it offered one parking per unit. Now they do have some overflow parking and then I went to Highland in West Borough, this is on Main Street. They have hundred twenty four units and they only have seventy two parkings. So I asked them, don't you have a constraint? What if I come up and, and they are also have two bedroom units, they have one bedroom, two bedroom units. So I asked them, they said they never had a problem, okay? And then I went to Lemonster and they are building six hundred fifty units and they are actually doing one unit. Uh, one parking per unit, because they have a lot of two bedroom units and some one bedroom units, so they may, and then I look at the Lemonster bylaw. The, and their bylaw actually, and I do have copies of, uh, those bylaws if you, if you like to have. And they also have like the same thing as half a parking per, per bedroom. So it's two bedroom is one, whereas we are suggesting regardless of whether it's a two bedroom, one bedroom. We offer, uh, you know, one parking plus all these facilities have shut up and we will also be offering shut. Okay, and then we will also have some services, like the gym, like the activity room, all those similar services other facilities offering. So our facility will be ditto as Highland, as Villows Independent Living, as South Gates Independent Living. Or as the newest facility being built on Brooks Pond in Lemonster. And they all have less, uh, you know, ratio of parking than what we are offering. Yes, we have, we are putting parking in the basement, but we outside, we are actually putting less parking. And to be honest, if you look at how they look, it is almost difficult to tell how, you know, how they. How they look, uh, from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty four, so that is twenty twenty one. This one is, uh, am I, am I putting it right? Sorry, this one. And will it be, uh, twenty, if any, please, uh, give that twenty eighteen, please. So, it's a little bit farther view, because we are also working with mass DOT. And we actually have hired, uh, traffic engineer for Marlborough MDM, which is very, uh, they have a lot of experience and they will be working. So I don't know if you have a history that, uh, both mass DOT, the town selectmen, neighbors. We have letters, they were all very, very happy and appreciative that we are actually offering, uh, you know, some, um, easement. To, you know, basically, because right now this doesn't exist. So, you know, ma- giving this and making this, you know, uh, and then that's another thing at the end, I want to talk to you that. If we could make this as a one way and whatnot, that's what we have been talking to the SDOT and, and, and whatnot. But we, you know, honestly, we've been working on this, we've spent a lot of time and money and resources trying to design and doing all those things. Trying to accommodate everybody and now my biggest concern is the, you know, I'm on the second leg of my conservation commission extension. And time is of the essence and I, we want to really, you know, close this and, uh, you know. And, 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 and as, now, I must say, uh, you know, the, the department, um. Has a very, very smart, we have met with all the department heads and I had multiple meetings with, you know, with Bob and Laurie. And, uh, I mean, especially I think Laurie has given us a lot of feedback and honestly, she has zillions of ideas. And, and she made this facility a lot better, yes, it will be more expensive for us to build. But she has added a lot of things and that's it, and we have seen more iteration on the plans, that for example, she had asked us to, you know, add some. You know, uh, some patio, some even, uh, dock park, some bike area. I mean, there's a lot of things Laurie has asked and we have already, you know, accommodated all those. So that's really, I mean, in the nutshell, why are we here? That we have a major sewer constraint and we're actually reducing that intensity, that's not what developers like to do. And, uh, and then basically, uh, you know, we will be attracting seniors and helping them that instead of. You know, offering seven to ten thousand dollar per unit, we are offering three to four thousand dollar per unit with more like third party services. So that you use, if you need it, if you don't need it, you know, you don't need to pay for it. So this really is a very new concept and that's it, and many towns are still learning and improving their bylaws. Not every town has these same bylaws, by the way, last time I was here, also there was no detail on the parking requirement for the. Assisted living either, so I then went and I did this similar kind of research for assisted living, that what parking requirement they have. And the board was very appreciative and that's how we came up with. North Borough does not have any detail on any parking requirement, so that's it, and I did this study.
Okay, um, so can you confirm, um. The twenty eighteen plan, I said that there were sixty six units.
That's correct, sorry.
And.
Forty four parking.
Right, sixty six units, forty four parking.
Yes, sir.
Those units though, they were all one bedroom, is that correct?
They were bed, one bedroom, most of them. There were very, very few, do I think, mostly one bedroom, that's correct.
Mostly one bedroom.
Yes, sir.
And then the, the twenty twenty one plan?
Twenty twenty one plan had four one bedrooms, actually have three out there, one bedroom, two bedroom and studios. Even the, even the twenty eighteen one had some two bedroom, but very few, mostly one bedroom.
Okay, and so the twenty twenty one plan was still, and so this is the original plan was, or the plan currently in front of us today. Is going to be on Saptic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so I want to ask a couple of questions about, um, the use variance. Um, so, this is kind of just stating the obvious here, but. So North Borough has, um, and a lot of use for assisted living facilities where we define what an assisted living facility is. You sort of hear, you know, it has to be, uh, licensed by the, um.
It's elderly affairs.
Or at least it's the elderly.
Yes, yeah, 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 okay, where it's licensed by the elderly affairs. Um, and I believe that the previous plans were assisted living, right, so we're talking about. Sort of an younger population, I, uh, that requires a little bit more services, um. They obviously, you know, consider them to probably be less, uh, likely to have cars or multiple cars, I should say. Um, so I believe, if I remember correctly, the decision was based a lot on that, that, you know, you were talking about. Um, individuals that require more services, I believe there was a staff that was, um, at least a dozen people, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, it was more of a Coleman House, I guess, type of facility. Uh, so this facility or this use, and I guess the reason why, again, why you're in front of us today. Is a senior living facility, right, where there is more independent living, right? Um, you know, I mean, it's essentially an apartment complex, but it caters to individuals of a certain age, is that?
With, with certain needs.
With certain needs.
Like, like Highland, I asked them, even though it's, you know, senior, but basically still, they have. Their average age is about seventy four and they had a hundred three year old lady who had, but the, the celebrated her hundred third birthday. You know, over there, so they are called independent living, but the difference really is that then, they are not offering the nursing care. The memory care, the bathing and all those directly and don't collect, cannot collect, offer directly. If they do it through third party, it's the same facility, same, but if they do third party, then they don't have the executive office of elderly affair. And that's the reason Highland doesn't have it, that's the, the portion of below doesn't have it, that's the reason South Gate doesn't have it, and that's the reason. The, the new facility in Lemonster designed. They, they are called independent living and most of these bylaws, they, they have bylaws about senior living, independent living. And if you look at Lemonster bylaw, the parking requirement for independent senior, uh, is, 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 you know, half a parking per unit. Per, 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 per bedroom.
Does the bylaw restrict sort of by age?
Yes, sir, yes, yes, that's the biggest restriction, yeah.
So the bylaw that Lemonster has, and. So the bylaw that Leamster has, and I haven't looked, so but we can confirm.
No, sure, all the town, the bylaws they have is age restricted.
So other towns have looked at senior living, independent living.
Yes, sir.
As a, as a use, has gone through the process, as their planning boards have presented in front of the town boards. Gone through all the due diligence, right? In those towns to come up with a plan, um, and how they wanted to find sort of senior living, independent living. And gone through that process, right?
Yeah, my understanding is that most towns have put assisted living, independent living and memory care all under one roof. They put all under the one roof and they have campuses, like Willow has a campus for nursing care, has a campus for assisted living and has a campus for inde- independent living. Whereas the Highland, they call it all in independent living because they don't collect directly. It's all about how you provide services.
Okay. Um, so I guess with regards to the use though, right? In order for this project to move forward as currently presented, right? The use variance that you're looking for doesn't currently exist within, right? We don't define senior living slash independent living, however you want to define it, right? Within our bylaws. But we would need, so that is essentially what we're trying to, uh, discuss tonight.
Correct, it's not allowed use currently in the town.
Okay. And so then I guess a question I have, and maybe this is more, maybe a question for town council, it is, you know, based on one of your. Or is conditions or within your notes, um, you know, you basically asked, what is the minimum age requirement in living this development? And you say, as a condition of the rule, you recommend submission of an age restriction covenant for town council review and approval. Uh, in the response from the applicant, right, as stated in in the response letter, is essentially. We can't have a age restriction on, uh, the facility.
No, sir, I.
Then you you go through sort of this, you know, housing for older people act of nineteen eighty-five. Um, and then sort of then you kind of say it could be, it could potentially get challenging, right?
No, sir, I'm sorry, that's one, made maybe mistake.
Sure.
Yeah, no, there, I I did say fifty-five, I I do agree with the ages restriction, but the age is fifty-five, that's what the act say.
Okay, so fifty-five.
Fifty-five, yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's why Shrewsbury has.
Okay, so I get, I think a question that I would have for town council to sort of provide more clarification on is these conditions that could be put on a decision. Right?
And I cited the law, sir, in there, I did sign, I copy and paste it actually, the, because. So it does not get challenged, so they stipulated the law and the Congress approved it. That basically you can give specialized, uh, you know, uh, use for fifty-five plus and you can make that as a, but you cannot do, you know, outside of the law.
Okay. Um. So I think the other question I have then also is, uh, with regards to affordable housing. Um, you know, I know typically when you have projects of this size, and I don't believe that there was affordable housing on the prior, um. Decisions. Um, the fact that this is now sort of an independent living facility, uh, I do have a concern. Um, and I'm sure that the Housing Authority may have a cons- an input there as well on. Releasing sixty-six units without any units considered to be affordable housing. So I guess the question for the applicant is, um, I believe, Lori, I don't know if you notice offhand, but Avalon has approximately twenty percent.
Correct.
Um, that are mandated to be affordable housing.
Correct.
Okay. So then I guess the question for you is, you know, having a facility of this size that is an independent living. Senior living, however you want to say, I guess, you know, you had mentioned. Was, uh, under section six or question six, um, you know. Is there a number for affordable housing that you wouldn't comfortable with?
Sir, I have to tell you, I travel around the globe and I did a lot of interviews and basically most of this. Uh, and and this is actually in this study, too, there's five facilities I have. I have to compare with this area and not really the area outside, so Shrewsbury, Westboro would be a good comparison, you would say, pretty. So, for example, Highland or Villows, they require like almost three hundred thousand dollars down to actually get in. And and because most of these people, they're at that time, sell their home, put that as a deposit, and then they do get eighty-five to ninety percent back. Plus they pay thirty-five dollars a month fee, okay, plus meal and this and that, okay? Or whatever other services they get. What I'm saying is, we want to make this affordable, that if I build this facility as is, the way it's approved. There will be no way I would be doing anything less than seven to ten thousand dollars a month, which is LCB, because we will be exactly competing with LCB. Uh, Orchard Grove is called, uh, it's not LCB anymore, it's so, at Warner Street in Shrewsbury. And it will look a hundred percent like that because they have eighty units, they have, yeah, of course, no, uh, inclusionary or anything like that. But still, it's seven to ten thousand dollars because you're offering some services and there's a lot of overheads. We took that overhead out and make it very affordable, we're making the entire facility very affordable, three to four thousand dollar. As compared to by providing love gym, by providing activity center, by providing shuttle, by providing a lot of the similar services. But not charging extra, except if they need any healthcare services like medicine management, anything like that, they will be doing it themselves. So we believe that we have already gone from eighty-eight to sixty-six units. And we have, we are reducing this very heavily, uh, to basically attract, you know. The right folks and 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 I believe honestly, it's gonna be resonating very well with our, you know, aging senior population. Uh, putting any more burden on on this facility will make it almost non-functional. Because this, we we have gone from eighty-eight units to sixty-six units and we have added more parking. And, you know, it just, it just.
Right.
It just get very, very difficult, and by the way, this is not multifamily. If add, if you guys wanna go and compare with Avalon or multifamily, if you make no age age restriction, then I agree with that, a hundred percent agree with that. But this is a specialized facility and it's catering, so and we want to give that benefit to everybody. Because to be honest, there's only two ways we can do it, if we agree with you today, that means, at the end of the day, it's a business. So it means the people who will be paying full, their price will be going down. If we wanna make it, of course, we gotta make it affordable, otherwise the business won't run.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the thing is, you know, and I think I was on the board the last time you came in front of us, um. And so, you know, I'm aware of obviously, you know, the the, you know, and and again, the decision that was in twenty twenty-one was a affordable decision, right? There were some, um, you know, some of the neighbors that were concerned about the traffic and flow, and I appreciate the redesign that you did.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, it looks like some of that redesign has been changed because I I remember specifically discussing, you know, the utility of you're driving down east on Route twenty, not being able to sort of just. Veer to the right and swing down King Street, right? And you've sort of blocked that off, that has changed, so that is a concern, but going back to the use.
So we will talk about that, I wanna.
Yeah, yeah, that, and yeah, we we can get to the sort of site plan part of it. Um, but going back to the use thing part of it, right? I think part of the, you know, I mean, no matter how you slice it, right? This is a very dense project for a two-acre piece of property, right? I mean, we just passed, I say town, right, the MBT Overlake District, um. Uh, bylaw, right, which I believe is fifteen units per acre.
Correct.
Right, you're talking about sixty-six units on two acres of property, right? So it is more dense, this proposal, than what the state thinks is like a dense housing, right? So, you know, and and again, if you go back and look like to the twenty eighteen, uh, decision, right? The proposal was the same, like the issues are still the same, where you have a very big building, a very dense use, right? I mean, you're talking about senior living, adult living, people who are up and about, driving around, stuff like that. You know, you're talking about sixty-six units, fifty-four of them are two units, you know, you're talking, you know, maybe two cars per unit, right? That's a lot of traffic, obviously, you know, we we need to look at some kind of traffic study, but. Sorry, going back to the use, right? This is a very dense use. Now, in terms of the affordable housing, right? And Lori, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but if this gets approved with sixty-six units of independent living, right? Does that reduce Northborough's, like, percentages in terms of affordable?
It does.
Okay. So you can understand where where we're coming from, where, you know, the town of Northborough, I believe, takes a a lot of pride in. Uh, making sure that we have, we are above the ten percent affordable housing limit. And I know that that is a very, um, I don't wanna say contentious, but it's a very, uh, topic of discussion that gets. You know, it's in the master plan, it gets discussed at multiple meetings and multiple boards, right? And I think it's something that the town should be proud of, that we do have a housing stock of affordable housing that is over ten percent, which. To be honest, not a lot of towns are over ten percent. And this proposal, if it were to be approved, would be reducing that stock of affordable housing. And I understand your point about, well, hey, we can make this affordable and we can make it three thousand a month or whatever the case is, but. You know, it's that capital A affordable, right, where you have to, you have to designate them as affordable, that sort of gets into the calculus, uh, for them. So. I think that that's kind of, you know, in terms of the use, my initial thought on that, but. I'll stop talking now, but if anyone has any other questions, I think, yeah, we can dig into the site plan too, which I think I have more questions, but. Figure if we want, if you wanna start with use, and sort of that change there.
I have use questions, not related to, uh, affordable housing. Um, okay, so going to the services, if we s- stick with the plan, um, about people. So I was thinking, um, I I guess it does have a little bit to do with the site plan, but that you said that people could order services. You know, if they needed, like, um, and everything, so I was wondering, like, are you offering, like, okay, if you need it, here is your plan? Like, if you need nursing care, are you offering them a menu or are these things that people would have to find on their own for, um, people to come to them? And are you gonna have, like, special spots labeled for visitors in the parking lot?
Yeah, ye- yes, no, it's a great question. And we will do, so that's similar to what other companies are doing. But basically, we will have, you know, third-party services, you know, many, we cannot be just one service, like if this is.
Right.
You know, medicine management, we give them three different choices, if this, that, so we'll give them, you know, uh, if they can call any, anyone they like. Or we can, you know, we, our facilities carry some suggestions.
Right.
So we, but we will offer space for third-party to come in and and cater that service.
And then, um, and how with the payment? Because I know even, even your richest clients, I know you had said you're trying to, you know, cater and attract the the right kind of people. Um, I mean, everyone's on insurance these days, you know what I mean? And everyone's on like Medicare or something, like, I I think that's like.
We will not get involved at all. If we, if this is even.
You're not gonna get involved.
If this is an independent senior living, we legally cannot get involved.
Right.
That has to be directly, uh, paid, if we collect it, then we have to have executive office.
So they're gonna pay the third-party vendors that you're gonna.
No, they can pay through insurance.
Oh, okay, so they they handle all of that.
They have to handle that.
Third-party vendors.
Yeah, we will only facilitate it, we cannot collect it. That's the difference.
And then. Yeah, and then I was, I had just like, while you were showing us the presentation, you gave us the handout. I just quickly like, um, looked at some of them and I saw like, um, Southgate and Shrewsbury offered like a bowling alley and a pool and. Um, Brooks Pond offered like, um, a pool as well, and then Place in Westboro offered free transportation places, like, will you be offering?
We will be offering, everybody is different.
Yeah.
And a little bit same.
Yeah.
We we are actually often definitely shut up.
Yeah.
We were, we are, we are offering, you know, a gym, that way basically, the the physical therapist can come as well, that's very similar to those places as well. We do not have, uh, the the pool, but we, but 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 we do have, thanks Lori, we do have, you know, a a space outside, very nice space, a garden. And, uh, a patio outside, we do have a chapel, we have a movie theater, uh, we have, uh, uh, you know, uh, a a library. Uh, so that's what we have.
Okay. And I know we do have a, a beautiful like senior center, so that was, you know, that was one thing I was thinking of, like with the shuttle and everything, it's not.
And 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 I think going back to the chair, uh, you know, yes, it is two-acre, but it is, we are lucky that it's in the back, this really, nobody can build because it's a beautiful. You know, woods and wetland, so it'd be a very nice view. As compared to, I don't know if you know that the LCD's facility Orchard Grove is also on two and a half to two acres and they have about eighty-plus units. And they have, you know, fifty-plus buttons, that's exactly the model I had in mind when I was designing this facility. So a lot of these facilities are designed that where, please, understand where we are and where we're going. We are approved for eighty-eight units and if we go with the current approval, and have you, if we don't take that, that route. We will unfortunately be, you know, trying to work out a solution which will put more strains and more, take more resources. We do think very much, and we wanna honestly align as much as possible, that's the reason a lot of things Lori has asked, we have, we have added. My only concern is that if we add, you know, more to it, first of all, I never said no, anything. You know, I I wanna find, we wanna find a solution which we can, you know, figure it out, that it's, you know, it's good for everybody. But please do understand that we're going from eighty-eight to sixty-six units. And we are, you know, uh, offering lots of services and we are reducing. The biggest thing we're doing is we're reducing the rate for everybody. And 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 we believe that's, that, and 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 this facility, by the way, also, we did change some grading, I'm gonna get into that. Where basically the maneuverability of the facility and walking ability and everything else makes a lot better. And I do wanna thank Lori and the staff, uh, for that because they have been asking us those questions.
But those are my questions related to this meeting.
Uh, just from, uh, you know, financial perspective, you talk about having the ten thousand to eleven thousand dollar rents for the assisted living. I've seen this personally professionally, uh, throughout the country, that there's been so much pressure put on costs. For the services provided and attempting in the assisted living. So just wanna get your specifics as far as what expenses are the tenants responsible for? Pay this three thousand or four thousand dollar rent versus the assisted living, which is paid to the business on a monthly basis. And the business is subject to the up, the expense increases and inflation.
Yes, sir, so so one big difference is that basically those facilities have three meals and they have a professional kitchen and they, you know, and.
And nursing care and kind of rehab.
Ye- yes, sir.
Folks that come in and.
Ye- ye- yes, I do, absolutely, that's a huge difference. And by the way, it's not all anybody ten thousand, so it goes from, it depends, it goes from fifty-five hundred to twelve thousand, thirteen, fifteen thousand. Depends where you are and what, what services they offer. My best really comparison is the LCB Orchard Grove facility, they are about seven to twelve thousand dollars. Seven thousand for assisted living and about twelve thousand for memory care.
Yeah.
And they are sold out, they are, they are usually ninety-plus, you know, occupancy, almost a hundred percent occupancy. Matter of fact, I checked even the, uh, Southgate is a hundred percent. And and if I want to, you know, put my name, I have to put my name, so all these facilities are kind of doing very well.
Yeah.
And yes, they are paying for services, but I honestly believe, and I have done that study and I'm more than happy to give you more detail. If I'm charging three to four thousand dollar, and if somebody wants to, somebody may wanna get just medicine and that management, they don't need the nursing all the time.
Sure.
Somebody may needs B, somebody may need C, so whatever you get, and my study was, and I actually have a U D video on that too, I've done a lot of study. So basically, it's a far cheaper, and this is the reason more modern facilities are moving this way.
Sure.
It's really the idea of postponement in the factoring, I came from an effecting actually, and this is basically instead of building, you know, different kind of forms by everybody. Let's build a basic form and then change at the, at at the time and the customer coming to buy.
So just to go back to the question then, as far as if I'm a tenant here in this facility.
Yes, sir.
My monthly rent is three to four thousand dollars, what else am I paying?
If you.
Electricity?
No.
There's no separately ma- no separately metered?
No.
No parking, additional parking?
No parking, well, one parking becomes free. And if we have a whole full parking and, you know, somebody wants separate parking, I can't honestly speak to a rule right now because. But one parking which we are designated will come free, there will be no extra for utilities, these facilities, the utilities are already paid. So you only pay if you're getting physical therapy, if you're getting medicine management, if you're getting any of those third-party services.
But you're paying them directly through third-party services?
Yes, sir, through insurance, a lot.
Your business is basically collecting the rent as like a part of it, though.
That's good, that's correct.
Okay.
But the difference between a partner building and this is that we are also having gym, we are also having home theater, we are having activity center, there are several things we are talking about.
Yeah, you see a lot of those amenities offered in kind of newer construction.
Ye- yes, sir, but we are not adding that on top.
Right. Uh, Susan.
So you'll, you'll, um, I'm getting, can just. Can just confuse a little bit with the different, so this isn't like a reflection, I mean, it's more a main problem, but. Will you have like an activities director that you'll hire, like within the um building, do you think, or something?
We will have an activity supervisor, yeah.
Okay.
But it it doesn't need a director, no question.
Right, yeah, but somebody to kind of captain it for you, like for a person.
Yes, ye- yes, yeah, just like, yeah, just like we will have somebody for gym.
Yeah, okay.
But if if not, no physical therapy, physical therapy will be a third party.
Right, yes, okay.
Um, I got it.
Yeah, you're right, David.
Um, so when you were showing the other assisted living, independent living homes in the area, all of them had um. Was it half a parking space per unit? Why the need for almost two spots per unit at this complex?
No, I didn't say that. I I I I I'm not saying I'm gonna have, I'm saying.
You're asking for um. Um, what is it, a hundred and eight space?
Hundred and seven, yes, sir, okay, thank you, that's a good question. So now I understand where you're going with that. So basically, where we started from is because North Borough does not have. Uh, you know, a bylaw for senior living and, you know, and 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 then looking at, no, Baba and I have been going back and forth. And I have to see what's the maximum number of parking I can provide, okay? So basically. I do believe that, because I have two bedroom units as well, I do believe we wanna provide one parking, just like the. South Gate, just like the uh new facility in the Leamester, they do provide one parking. For every year, and we wanna provide one parking for every year, that's sixty-six. Then you provide about four parking for employees, that's seventy. Then you provide ten percent for guests, that's seventy-seven, okay? Then we also have the third-party services, right? So you wanna provide the parking for that. And then, you know, so we do have a third-party service, a day care center as well. So we, we will have about thirty or so parking for overflow slash third-party services.
Okay.
Because there are fifty-four, uh fifty-three two-bedroom units, so we will provide them one parking. Uh, you know, and then if there's overflow, we we honestly like the model of South Gate, where they say if you go to them. They give you one parking and then they have overflow and they give you if they have it. And by the way, we're not gonna be able to build R one seven, one or seven is the max we have and we didn't wanna, you know, hide that. We believe when we go to the structural engineer and he's gonna maybe put beam, we may get two, four, five parkings for the, for the structure.
Okay, cuz I know originally when you came in with fewer parking spots, one of the major concerns was traffic. And to me, you add more parking spots, you're inviting more traffic. And that was a major issue and that's one of the reasons why one of our conditions was to close off King Street and now it looks like that's going away.
No, no, sir, that's not going away. That's not going away.
Well, in the design, you say it's a one-way.
No, 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 uh that's what you were saying, that that was, if it's just, then do one way to. Maybe we we wanna get into that, I I.
Alright, we can get into that later, yeah.
Um. Any other questions with regards to the use and stuff like that?
Yes, okay, go ahead. So um the letter that you had sent uh to Lori, you were talking about um the age restriction. And here you said it may be unnecessary, it could be a challenge in the court of law. Earlier today, you said you still wanted fifty-five plus, what's what's stopping people from fighting this and inviting families um into this? Because you invite families, you're talking about reducing resources for police and fire, I mean, for fire EMT, but you're gonna increase. Um, you're gonna increase um demand for schools, police, things like that.
Yes, sir. So I just wanna first of all clarify, because Lori asked some questions and some questions. What answer, you know, i- i- in different sequence, so we clearly saying, we hundred percent agree with the age restriction. What age? We believe thirty-five, because that's what the 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 law says. Okay, and that's totally legal to do that, uh to have that thirty-five year. And then what should be the percentage? It says that no more than uh, you know, twenty percent could be uh under fifty-five. So that's what if the law clearly stipulate what it would be. So it's eighty-twenty rule. So we will do whatever the law law says, we will stick with the law, so we don't get sued. They're wrong. So the law says that whenever you're doing an age age restriction, it's always eighty-twenty rule. Eighty percent is fifty-five plus, but you are allowed to do less than uh 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 twenty percent for for un- under fifty-five. That's what.
That's on a unit basis?
It's a, I, yeah, I think it's unit basis.
I think it's long with that one.
Where, yeah, so eighty percent of the sixty-six can be fifty-five and over.
Yes, sir.
And then twenty percent can be.
No, no, I think it's, isn't it twenty percent of the residents who live in the development can be. Under the age of fifty-five, so I guess, for example, you had a couple. So the husband is fifty-five, but the wife is fifty-three. Um, or you have, you know, a single mother. So then you have, the mother is fifty-six and the child is twenty-five. So I think, is, isn't that the way it works?
Lori, I honestly, I'm not gonna lie to you, some some things I know, I've done research, some things I don't know. This one, I will double check, but whatever the law says, I just, we just follow, and I I would double check also with the. Uh, the Brooks Pond, because they have six and fifty units and they have about five hundred units operating, so I'll double check, you know, what's going on.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably a good thing to.
Yeah, I think it's unit base, that's my humble opinion.
So every single unit, twenty percent of the occupants can be present?
That's not what I think. I think that if there are sixty-six units. Eighty percent of the units, what is eighty-six? Eighty percent of the sixty-six, about fifty-six or so. Would have to be fifty-five plus and the other uh, then or so could be uh under fifty-five. That's the way I I see it, but I could be, I'm not gonna.
Yeah, I think you have to double check, I don't think that's right.
Probably need to get some clarification on exactly what it is that um can be stipulated and uh. Probably we jump in on that, yes, whatever.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanna confirm one thing about the parking, um Lori, your thing, I think they kinda noted it on their response, so. Um, the total recommended spaces for this facility is actually hundred and thirty-two based on your calculation, right? Uh, I think.
It was multifamily.
Right, and their proposed spaces one way, based on the the North Borough, right?
Yeah, yeah, let me just quickly, sure.
Yeah.
When Rashid came to me with this change, I had, you know, one of the things I have to do is try to figure out what he wants to do.
Sure.
And kind of pigeonhole it into what we have currently existing in our books, regardless of what the other towns do. The the closest thing I can come up with was multifamily, because there's no state control, there's um. Um, and there's no age restriction currently on on what he was proposing, so. The closest thing I could find a category that would fit is multifamily, okay? Multifamily is allowed by special permit in that zone, however, you're limited to ten units.
Sixteen, I calculated it today, I believe it's sixteen.
Sixteen units? I thought it was ten, but anyway, he's way over the the the, cuz he's got sixty-six proposed, okay? Um, if I remember right, I took a, a account of the um. Units, uh there's some studios, there's some one-bedrooms, there's two-bedrooms. He basically took the parking loading for those specific units, make up over that one thirty-two month, if, okay? Uh, now Rashid has done a huge amount of research on parking demands based on similar facilities. And I've, and he's presented it to me and I says, I I I can't, you know, what I have to do is live with what's in here.
Yep, yep.
The variance comes into play with what you folks can work out with.
Yeah.
Okay, so that that's how I come up with the one thirty something.
Right, according to the North Borough by law.
According to what's.
The one thirty-two.
Going strictly by the law, yeah.
So hungry beef is up to us.
So may, sir, may I just add one? When I came for the uh in pass, assisted living. The North Borough byline, my humble opinion, doesn't even have the parking requirement for that either. So we did the same type of study for the assisted living in the area, we came up with that.
Okay. Um, and then I guess, um, anyone, yeah, Dr.?
Sorry, just cuz the application comes through as the LLC in the line, so it's hard to see the name, but. It's the brand that you operate under, is it Fa- Falcon?
Uh, different names.
Okay.
This name would be Falcon Meadows, I mean, Falcon Meadows.
Okay.
And the first that owns the property that I know is the H S.
Okay, so are the other, how many other uh multifamily or multi-unit properties do you own?
In upper advantage, we have venue state first, we have, you know, venue max, we have, we are just first.
Okay, so you have ten properties, twenty properties. You know, and then how many of them are assisted living versus they're all age restricted units?
No, no. They are either multifamily.
Or age restricted.
Yeah, I don't have any right now, so.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, Jack, yeah.
Interesting, I have a question, I I wasn't involved in these other units. Back in eighteen, you came in for sixty-six units and that was on a septic system.
Yes, sir.
Then you changed to eighty-eight units on the town sewer.
Yes, sir.
And now you're going back to sixty-six on the septic, why?
Why?
What was the, what was the cost? Prohibitive, was it? What was, what made that change to go back? Something did it.
That's a great question.
Not that you're being so generous to the town.
Sir, okay, here's the.
Assistant director.
Assistant director from sewer, why don't we ask him, what do you think?
I'm asking you.
Sir, I can answer, but I'm just saying, because you already put that I'm not being generous. It's not about generosity, what I heard from Scott, one thing is the approval and the other thing is build ability, right? So I do have, I I would say that this is not one dimension, it's three, three reasons. In that I don't believe in keep fighting with the departments trying to figure out and put a burden. I I mean, I hear that North Borough may find two mile road because we are already over capacity. So B, that basically uh. The 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 new trend is going toward uh, you know, this third-party service, okay? So people like bigger units, people like, you know, third-party services. And so I mean, I'm combining these things and hearing everybody, and the third thing is, when I'm hearing that, you know, what are other constraints that. You know, town departments have, and they have a Coleman, and having the uh medicate in the basement, and that's what I get. So when I look at all those things, I thought, let's do something and let's move on. Instead of just seeing and sitting another five years and sitting doing nothing. I really, we really wanna move on and build this thing and fill this thing, that's what I wanna do.
So I guess where I'm going with this is now that you're not tying into the sewer. You've changed, it looks to me like you've changed your configuration for King Street and it changes the fact that King Street is a very narrow street. You know, if you were going tying into the sewer, you may be doing work in the street, now you may be more receptive to widening the street, giving us a sidewalk on the street. Um, and all that. Now that you're going in-house with the septic, you've sort of like taken that aspect of the project off the table.
I I think this is the time that we may talk about, you know, some of the things we are doing and because there is some misunderstandings here. Uh, first of all, we actually now have hired M D M, which is the traffic engineering company, very well known. We did not have that before, and that's an expensive deal. Because we are very serious about this and we will, we will be doing, and and I had meeting with them and we believe. That this is very doable, we are still offering the Eastman and the memorandum of understanding is still there with the town, and we will be redoubling. The King Street, and all I just ask is even help from you, because this is what. Uh, this is what we 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 have, this, we why, we are proposing to widen this area, okay? We are proposing to widen this area and we are proposing, and and that's where I think we will be, you know. Uh, working with the traffic engineer, that basically, we 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 would be suggesting that this street going this way ends here. And the street get routed this way and this way, because you basically don't wanna wipe, that's what the D O T suggested as well. That basically, when the the traffic comes in here, the traffic is going in, so to facilitate the traffic and lower the speed. You are going this way and then the side distance are tremendously improved, when you're going taking that for right here, what's you're doing here, because you're necking back. So we, we are doing that. Now, yes, you are correct that we suggesting that entry from the second entrance before, and now we're doing from this. Because once again, this is still needs to be finalized with Mass D O T, we believe this is far better alignment. Go to our facility, uh, you know, going to the garage and also to offer, you know, better distances. Because also the traffic is coming from another direction as well. So this still needs to be ironed out. I want, we wanted to see which direction we are going here before I spend more money on trying to get this approved and then, you know, things change. So we wanna really finalize here and then we have understanding, we have open uh application with Mass D O T. And I, you know, have to do the second contract with the, with the traffic engineer to make, to finalize this. We do believe that we can get that, that done.
Okay. Um, I I so I guess just a follow-up on that, and I guess we can sort of dive into some of the site stuff. What you're showing right there is not, you you're saying that that's that, that's not how it's gonna look, right? Cuz I I remember specifically that that one way that goes, if you're driving down East Twenty, that was block off in the twenty-twenty-one line. And there was a T. That intersection, right, it wasn't a four-way intersection, it was basically a three-way, right?
I am not, I'm not negating anything.
Yeah.
I'm saying this just need to be ironed out, we have the old plan and we haven't finalized this plan.
Yeah, I understand.
I just wanted to wait for you and I love to have your input. Whatever makes sense, whatever you say, I will put that with the traffic engineer and he is, you know, working on that, on that, we will. We are going to have the Mass D O T, the traffic engineer will, we will have the best solution possible. Uh, you know, and and I I would love to see this whole thing at one way. You know, because we do have the Route Twenty at the end. And then come the traffic that way, and then this goes one way from here. So I again, I'm not against any of the, on any of the solutions.
Okay.
Um, can we just go back, sorry, again, just the economics on the um sewer versus the uh septic? I I think you were going to comment on that. I'm not sure who who will be using that in front of the uh supervisors. Okay, so it never got even, I think it hasn't been finalized.
Okay.
And I think that's one thing to worry about getting hung up on, so we must move forward.
It has not been approved by the judge.
Okay.
It has not been approved by the judge. It it, I originally only discussed with that, with the director.
Gotcha.
I never heard it in front of the commission.
Okay.
In the beginning, in twenty eighteen, it looked like that there was a lot of, you know. Ionization and this and that, efficiencies I have to improve, and it didn't look very promising. Then as time go by and twenty-one when they check, it looked very promising, I had to pay fee, I said, okay, we'll do it. But now, I'm hearing, and I even had a quick conversation with, with assistant director yesterday. That it is unlikely, and I actually got an email, I did send an email to the uh G W director this morning. And he was very kind to promptly tell me that it doesn't look that this will get approved. However, that's really my backup.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I guess just to kind of piggyback off of um the septic sewer discussion. Um, so twenty eighteen was septic, twenty twenty-one was sewer, now we're back to septic. Twenty twenty-one was sixty-six units.
Eighteen, sir.
Sorry?
Eighteen, twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, sorry, got it. Twenty eighteen was sixty-six units. Uh, we're fairly certain that they were all one-bedroom units, right, at that time. This proposal, sixty-six units, but you have a mix of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. And I guess my question is, have we done the calculus? In terms of, I'm sure correctly, when we're looking at septic, that is very important part of the calculus.
Yeah.
Has that calculus been done, uh whether by the app, you know, by staff? To determine whether or not the size proposed as is, you know, meets, you know, whatever.
It would typically be done by our um. Plan will be submitted to our health department.
Okay.
Health director would review it, and either approve or deny it, or, you know, kind of what ACN picks. Um, I do know the magic number is ten thousand gallons or less. On a septic system, if you're going over ten thousand gallons, the T P gets involved, and it's a whole different level, that makes some costs. So, you know, the magic numbers, that ten thousand gallon per day.
Yep.
Or less, is is where you wanna be.
In that form of this done and with consultation with the board of, yeah, okay.
And to my knowledge, I haven't seen that yet.
So, so Mr. Chair, actually, this was the very first thing we had to worry about. We wouldn't be in front of you if we didn't have that figured out. It's a great question, by the way. That's the best, biggest discussion we had in the in the beginning. So basically, I gave you a quick math. In the senior living, that required hundred, hundred fifty?
Yeah.
Hundred fifty gallon for two-bedroom unit and hundred ten gallon for one-bedroom. You do the math, sixty-six actually get you around nine thousand, very quick math. So this is the first math we did, and it is written, uh, ten thousand gallon is the way to go. And our goal is to keep under the ten thousand gallon for the entire facility, with everything we're proposed.
Okay, so I guess Lori, we can just get the board of health to, whatever plan that you have for that, if you can.
Actually, it's the same plan, but we will share the calculation.
Okay. Was I wrong, sorry, and then, does the Board of Health, just, do they typically prove that before?
Well, in the revised plan, they did provide the septic system plan that was approved back then, two thousand eighteen, I believe, right?
That's correct, and I did check with the Board of Health, and we, you know, the plan is good.
You just have to submit your updated bedroom and.
Yes.
Unit count.
No problems, and we'll, we'll do the whole calculation and we'll send it to, to both of you.
Great.
All three of you.
Oh, yeah, so I think where my head had exploded is you said ten thousand gallons, and I'm thinking a ten thousand gallon tank isn't gonna even give enough. You're talking about a flow rate of ten thousand gallons a day, which would be a much larger situation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, that's just helped me, cause I was like, there's no way, and then, okay.
But that's many comments on, it had been discussed, designed, we ran in front of the Board of Health and all that.
So, yeah, I.
Paul, Mr. Chair, if we want, I do have one comment on the use concern, just to get my thoughts out there. Uh, I appreciate the applicant's, uh, presentation here. I unfortunately wasn't in the two, twenty-twenty-one or twenty-eighteen history here, so I. I had a lot of homework to do myself to review the, uh, very good, uh, application materials, but they were voluminous for me. By the time we finish this, I may be asking the Chair if you'd entertain the motion to keep this hearing open, and there's a few questions for me, and I don't want you to read too much into that, but. Um, uh, because as I'm hearing all this and putting this into my mind, I'm, I'm needing to process a little bit more. One of the things that jumps out to me, um, because I, um, I have been, just as a citizen, watching some of the other, uh, hearings. And I think I had actually watched the, one of the hearings where they were talking about the amount of flow capacity that they have in the sewer. That's not my main concern here, cause it sounds like we're committed to the, um, septic solution here. But part, part of the septic solution is driving your total unit cap, which is, and I think the applicant mentioned, is also driving the, uh. The business viability of the affordable housing, and I recognize the applicant's comments about. The willingness to go to the ten percent but without the age cap, so. In that area, what I need a little bit, myself, need a little bit more time to think about is. I have also been watching the Affordable Housing Committee's meetings, and I can't remember exactly what their calculation was recently. And so I, this is, on, my recollection was that we were really getting dangerously close to that ten percent. But I don't remember is if they were counting the eighty-eight units that had been approved here in that calculation.
No.
Or if they were.
No, I did the calculation.
Oh, okay.
So, it's ten point two eight percent current rate.
Yeah.
But each, um, and that's based on two thousand twenty census.
Yeah.
So, each unit is, that is built since two thousand twenty. Uh, ends up decreasing our percentage, so they're gonna recalculate it, I believe in two thousand thirty. And they're gonna start using the two thousand thirty number, so there's gonna be a big jump. Uh, in the number of units, so, um. Yeah, I mean, the, units that go into the subsidized housing inventory are counted immediately. Like, within a year, um, but the. Total number of units is only updated every ten years.
I see, okay, so that was one of the questions that I didn't know, was were we already banking on these units or not? Um, and as the Chair mentioned, I, 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 and I'm sensitive to the applicant's, you know, situation and concern. I just need a little more time to process it, what I do know is if that, well, I don't know this, I guess, if, if the Board of. You know, approves something that is blamed for putting us under the ten percent, we're all gonna get crucified. Um, you know, just simply because of, you know, you, as the applicant probably knows what that means, is developers can push through projects that may not be popular with the town. Um, without, uh, certain costs. So, uh, I'm not saying that that's telling anyone where I am right now, I'm just aware that that's a concern. And if we had ways to sort of balance that concern, that would really, um, solve where, where my limited thought is right. Sorry, I was just wanting to share what my thoughts are, the other issues are less concerning to me at this point.
Mr. Chair, maybe?
Yeah, sure.
So, so honestly, you gotta really see tonight that we are going from eighty-eight to sixty-six, that's what you have to see. This eighty-eight is already there. Yeah, so that's what you have to see, number one. Number two, this may sound funny, but it's real, I'm actually doing a lift project, I don't know if you've been with lift, you know, local initiative plan. Program, I'm, I'm doing a lift project for seventy-four units with, uh, Kton of Norton, and they love it. I honestly think we should plan, because we're back in twenty thirty, I would love to work with you guys if you wanna do a lift project. And then we don't have to, I mean, these are the big things we should be thinking about, this, we are already reducing, us going from eighty-eight to sixty-six. We're already reducing that in there.
Yeah, well, if, if I mean, uh, it's, yeah, I mean, from my perspective, whether, no matter, whatever the level of abstraction that we look at here. If I was able to see a developer applicant who said, well, we're not, we're not gonna put, we'd like to not have conditions on here. But here's how we can help the town with this other development by increasing affordable housing that's gonna balance it out. You know, I'm open up to any solution, what I'm worried about is running into a situation where we all get, you know, fired and. And burned at the stake because being blamed for going under ten, and I understand you're saying, we already have eighty-eight built in, you could build. At whatever timeframe you could build, if you need to, it's already been previously approved, I get that. Um, hundred percent understand, anyway, I don't wanna ju, monopolize the time, I need, I, I'm, I see, me personally, I need a little more time to. Absorb all the information, um, myself, but.
Yeah, and I, I think, and I, I do share some of those concerns, I kind of stated them earlier, I think, um, I would. I would like to hear from the housing authority, is that, would be, is that a good resource for? Um, you know, their take on sort of the state of Northborough Affordable Housing, and sort of the impact?
Um. Well, of course, they, they have the properties that they manage. And, uh, so it's the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation that has really been, uh. Working on increasing the supply of affordable housing, so, um, maybe that would be, um, a better source.
Okay.
So, you, you want a letter from it, please?
Uh, I just want, uh.
Or if you want, come to me, maybe?
Maybe just an input letter, if he doesn't wanna come. Uh, just to kind of discuss sort of what the state is, cause I mean, from what you've said, and I think is my concern, and I think Jacob, I think others shares. You know, the number ten point two eight percent is based on twenty-twenty, and if we're counting all new house, or new housing stock is not calculated. The number that, the number that goes up, the percentage goes down. You know, that, I think is, is basically what you said.
That's what it is.
Yes, right, yeah.
So. And, uh, if. Yeah, Mr. Chair, and maybe, and I wanna be open-minded about this, cause maybe we can ask town council, and we can find some reason or justification why. A development like this may be counted differently, or not counted at all, or zeroed out with the calculus. I don't know, I'm happy to have all solutions evaluated, um, because I, uh, from the. From the perspective of the applicant, I, I hundred percent see why, compared to the alternatives, this may be affordable with a little A, but not with a big A. And so, there's the practical realities that this may be a great thing for the town, at the same time, we're having to consider the laws the state puts on us. So, it's like, I'm trying to figure out solutions, and, and one, one easy way to do this would be is if we pass the town meeting a new bylaw. That said, this, this thing is allowed by right, or with a special permit, or whatever, uh, certainly, I'm sure the applicant wants to accelerate. Much earlier than, uh, April, uh, for us getting, uh.
I think I, I would, I would. Close it off by saying, I think that that topic needs a little clarification for me, and it sounds like for you as well. Um, and I think I need to think about it a little bit more on terms of what the impact is going to be.
I, I can answer that question, though. Um, so, the only way that it wouldn't necessarily have to be on the subsidized housing inventory. Is if you convey the ownership to, like, the housing authority. And then, by nature, by anything that is shown by the housing authority is permanently affordable. So, otherwise, it has to be subject to at least a thirty-year affordability restriction. Usually, it's in perpetuity.
I'm sorry, I, I did not understand what you're saying.
So, in order for it, like, the number not to go on, uh. So, all units are counted as dwelling units. So, the only way it could get away from, uh, not being on the subsidized housing inventory. So, like, not having a permanent deed restriction or a thirty-year deed restriction. Is if the ownership switched to an affordable corporation like the housing authority. Or, um, the Massachusetts, uh, like Mass Development Store, I, I don't even think they own land. But you, you get my point.
I don't know how we could do that, that means we, we give the entire project to, how many startup?
I'm just answering his question about, like, how do you get around if not ending up those, those, uh, sixty-six units? Because what you're saying is, well, if in nature they're affordable. Wouldn't they count on the subsidized housing inventory, and the answer is no. Uh, the only way they would count is if they either have a thirty-year or longer affordability restriction. Or they are owned by a, um, authority, like, the housing authority. That is in the business of owning affordable units.
And, and so, and with the application, based on the comments I wrote on question six is, for the applicant, at this point, to be. To have that kind of thing at a ten percent rate, which at least would not make us, quote-unquote, worse. Granted, I understand you're saying you're already making better, cause you're going eighty-eight to sixty-six, I totally get that part. Um, but on the sixty-six, ten percent sixty-six, if we don't do the, um. Age restriction, which the Chair brought up, other concerns about the age restriction relating to other services. So, those are the, it's a lot of information that I'm just trying to process and weigh, and I'm not sure that my scales, in my head, are like, quite. Able to be stabilized yet, so that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, honestly, when I was coming in, I was just thinking, this could be a very complicated discussion, a very simple discussion. I honestly, if I simplify this, and I know you need time, and that's fine, we'll, we'll deal with it. But I have put my head around this for months. And the simple thing is that there are two major things, one is, Northwood bylaws is the only bylaw which mention executive office of end of the year license. Had that sentence not there, we wouldn't be even talking about the units. And the other towns do not, and I, I will actually send you the, the bylaws, I have blacked it, and you could be, you wouldn't talk to me. So, so that's number one. Number two, you know, we have this, you know, major sewer issue whether we, 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 we have that issue, okay? So, these are really the two major, you know, issues we're dealing with. Now, honestly, if we are going from eighty-eight to sixty-six, then, let's not, let's not, let's not, let's not, uh, be naive about it. That we are putting an age restriction that really restricts every property. So, for good or bad reason, whatever. So, now, if we wanna put the affordability, I understand, then perhaps, maybe we don't put the age restriction. And we build the units we, we can with the, with the septic system. And we basically then deal with that, if affordability is that, they have to. Yeah, I, 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 I don't know, I mean, this is, but the way I see it is that basically, all other towns in the area. Are having these type of facilities, and they don't have this licensing requirement, which we have. And, you know, and they may not have that sewer problem that we have. And that's where, honestly, your power comes into play, that basically you have authority for this hardship.
Yeah. Can I ask a question? You know, uh, uh, I know that Northborough doesn't have a, a definition for, or for senior living, and you kind of stated here. Uh, have you, uh, brought this, these issues up with the planning board?
Here's the planning board, we did talk about maybe we go to the town meeting, and, but that's later. Uh, and I honestly would be happy to sponsor and clear a few things, I do believe Northwood badly needs to enhance its. That section of the, of the bylaws.
Well, I think typically around this time is when they start forming a new bylaws, so, I mean, I think it could be some.
I'll be happy to serve that.
Sure, okay. Um, all right. Yeah, going back to the housing inventory, when it was assisted living, does that go against our housing inventory?
So, the, so the, whether it's eighty-eight units or sixty-six units, it is not counted. So, right now, we have ten point two eight.
Yeah.
So, if the eighty-eight units are built, or the sixty-six units are built, then that decreases our number.
Right.
So, it's gonna be less than ten point two eight.
Mm-hmm, right, but before, when it was assisted living, that would still impact number?
It would, because none.
Be for seniors only, wouldn't it be designated something different?
It has to be, uh, deed restricted, as affordable. So, not necessarily, it, cause they could be very wealthy people living there.
Mm-hmm.
So, it only, um, gets counted on the S H I if it is deed restricted, affordable.
Okay.
Then that you gotta do, you're reducing the impact, like, we could, sixty-six or eighty.
Yeah. Susan.
I, I just had a question, it might be covered. Where, where is the sewer hookup, is it on Southwest Cut Off? It's not at King Street.
It, it's at the end of the King Street in the intersection of Southwest Cut Off.
Okay.
By the way.
Uh, I didn't see the proposed connection on the plans that were submitted, but.
Yeah.
Apparently, what's being spoken about now is, um, septic.
Right, but.
Yeah, I was just wondering when he was talking about.
If you continue the King Street, at the end of the King Street, where the Southwest Cut Off.
Yep.
It's like, it's about a thousand feet.
I was on the two thousand twenty-one, I didn't vote, I was not.
Okay, uh, so I just wanna, um, just touch upon a couple of things on the site plan, that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, so, can you just confirm? Um, what is going to happen with, um, that sort of triangular shape, I think it's thirty-eight King Street?
Yeah.
Could you?
What, could they?
I, I, I think I saw a plan that had a building, I know that previously it was a parking lot for staff.
That's, that's gonna.
Um, but if you want to confirm the area.
Yeah.
For this is.
Uh, what, what sheet you have been on, there's a lot.
Uh, I, I don't, C three works pretty good. Then on page four, yeah, right, yeah, if you can scroll up a little bit. There you go, okay, I think that's what you're talking about. Yep, yep, so the, uh, triangle, I mean, i- is it just a grassy area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, cool, so in terms of the traffic, right, um. So, your traffic flow here, right? Are you suggesting that you, this is just a proposal, but you don't really have a good feel for what it's gonna look like?
We have a feel, we have a feel, but we do want the traffic engineer and Mass DOT.
Sure.
To really finalize this thing. I mean, even when I was working with Brad, you, you know, he didn't, it was really Mass DOT and the traffic engineer. Actually, I didn't even have a traffic engineer, but just my civil engineer, but this time, we thought, let's get a traffic engineer.
Okay.
And so, that's a good thing. So, right now, my feel, talking to the traffic engineer, which is Bob Mishaw. Um, that basically, we are trying to widen the, 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 the King Street. And making it, you know, twenty or twenty-two feet, instead of twenty, yeah. Twenty feet, instead of, right now, it's being, what, fifteen, sixteen feet?
Yeah, yeah, fifteen to seventeen.
Yeah, so we basically are, you know, suggesting this, and then we are suggesting that because you have, you have the. You know, sorry, you, you have the traffic going this way, you don't wanna have a traffic going this way and this way. So, you stop this right here, you know, because there is the entrance of the other, other building, Camaros. So, the Camaro will continue, but thi- this will not be used, the, nobody would be able to go this way, because you have traffic coming this way. So, so that's basically, and then, from there on, we want to see if this could be entirely one-way. Going all the way, because then you have the other way to come back.
Okay.
Or, you know, two-way up to here and here, that's what traffic engineer and Mass DOT should figure it out, what's the best.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have any finalized plan?
I do not have finalized plans on this one.
Okay.
Because I want to really, before I.
Yeah.
I have to sign another contract with the traffic engineer, and I didn't do it because I wanna see which way that they go.
Okay, so those discussions are ongoing with Mass DOT to figure out, cause Mass DOT obviously owns Route Twenty.
Yes.
So, they're gonna give you the best, what they view as acceptable.
Correct.
Okay.
And we will hope that in this meeting, I, I don't know if you can prove anything or anything, we would hope that you support, you know, um. The, you know, whatever the Mass DOT and the, and the traffic engineer is gonna come up with as a solution. Uh, because, you know, I, I honestly, this is a little difficult for us. Uh, we only have one thing, and that is, well, maybe two, pay the fee for all that, which is, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. Plus, you know, do all that, and, and also offer the easement, which we have already done. We, we will do that, but we do need the cooperation from all the entities, with, whether that's Mass DOT that we are dealing with. But that is, you know, the town and whatnot, and I think the town, probably that would be more to selectmen, right? With whether that's mass duty that we are dealing with, but that is, you know, the town and whatnot. And I think the town probably that would be more to select them, right?
Uh the town, as far as uh what happens to King Street configuration, yes.
Yes. Uh we do have a M O U with that.
And I I assume that the traffic engineer. Um will be doing some kind of traffic study as well?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We have done some track study before, but we. Like I said, it was done by a civil engineer, and we thought it's better that we have traffic engineer. And 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 get master duty and traffic engineer.
And your use is changing. There's a completely different traffic.
Yes, sir, yes.
Assistant living persons. Um senior.
Yes, he, we made him aware of everything, but I was, I did not pay him the second installment for a bigger project because I wanted to see how we're going this.
Okay.
Um. Be- because you are right. I wanna I wanna know which way I'm going before I get a permit.
Yep.
Mister Chair, I.
Yeah, Chair.
I'm still lost on this beginning widening of the King Street.
Mm hmm.
At the beginning, why are you widening it?
Well, basically, the idea was that basically if this is going to continue this way, then, but yeah, even Lori said in her comment, she liked to see. I would say we will forget about this. We don't know if we need to widen this area or not, but this area.
Why can't you just block that off?
I love to, but but.
That was the condition.
That was the plan.
That was that was the plan.
Because I parked, I parked on there a couple of weeks ago. And before I opened my car, I thought it was dead. You know, and somebody came flying, and the same thing was in Shoesbury. Right before Flynn's Plaza on on Route twenty. They used to do the same thing. I don't know if it's Gold Street or something. I don't know the name.
Oh, yeah.
It used to come up going up towards Flynn's, and you used to bear right off. And I think they hit some little girl there, if I remember.
We would love to do that.
It's the same thing. So I don't like this widening because it's just inviting more traffic.
Here is the problem, sir. There is a problem. I don't think in the in the order you have blocked this. You just, that's what the best D O T and you suggested. That would be the best case scenario. But Camaro has the entrance here, the next door neighbor.
Yep.
I have absolutely no problem. I like to block it here. But I definitely would like to block from here after Camaro. If you don't wanna affect Camaro.
Can you just provide a a driveway to block it off? But then provide the driveway access off of that little island there.
No, we are. We we, this is gonna be.
For the neighbor too. So the neighbor is into.
This is a big.
Same entrance.
No, it's 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 a huge, great difference.
Yeah.
They they, believe me, I I want the best solution from them.
Yeah.
And and uh Camaro was very cooperative, by the way, very cooperative. And by the way, Camaro does have another e- entrance and exit on this side of. Uh Route twenty, right here. So we will talk. Again, all this is part of the discussion.
Uh yeah, I I mean, I think what I would say is my initial feedback is that you close off that sort of, you know. People driving straight through King Street.
Love that. Yeah, we love that. That's exactly what, everybody wants that. That's you want. Everybody wants.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard from some people that there's a, they like to cut through there and just beat the red light.
Yeah.
It doesn't quite work. Um. All right, so then I guess then the other question I had to was with regards to sidewalks. So I think Lori had made a comment about. You know, and I think this kind of goes to the overall uh like use of the facility, right? You know, this is targeted for, you know, older people, you know, you you're trying to make the case that there there not gonna be as many cars there. Right? There's a shopping center that's, say, a quarter mile away. Um but you know, the comment. You know, the response to the comment, I think, was a little troublesome. Um for me, in terms of adding a sidewalk, I feel like there's some pushback there from you. And I just kinda wanna get some clarification. I mean, for me, if I'm building a. Facility for targeted for older people and active living and, you know, I think if you look at. Um the place in Westboro, um. Someone on Lion Street.
Ohioan Street, they don't have a sidewalk alongside the street.
Yeah, well, anyway. If it was me, if you're asking me as a, as a uh reasonable person, I would think a sidewalk, at least going up and down your property. And connecting to other properties would be a good fit.
So Mister Chair. I do not mind accommodating any of those ideas. We we have, but here's the problem.
Hmm.
The problem is, these people have been living there for very, very long time over here, okay? Cutting the. You know, yard and going through, honestly, part of the thing I think we did in the last time. We wanna, I I I would welcome all the ideas and let's make the ideas which is practical. And don't make it so I can't even build a facility. Because I don't wanna be getting into a situation like I have super septic this, that, that I go back years and years and find. You know, these these people have been living there for very, very long time. I don't know if I have ability. If the town has the ability, then I think, please, this is a great thing we're doing for the town. Maybe town should get involved in that. But I don't know how I can get involved and ask people to give me the the the.
Yeah, so the the right of way is thirty three feet wide and the paved width is eighteen feet wide. So that means that there should be plenty of space for a uh four or five foot sidewalk. It's just a matter of surveying where the um where there's excess space within the right of way. But you should have sufficient room where you don't need easement from anybody. Because it would be part of the public acceptance of the right of way.
In this street even?
Yes, yes, it's thirty three feet wide. And the paved width seem to be pretty consistently um no wider than eighteen feet.
That's correct. I'm not saying it. I would love to see this wider. I'd love to see the sidewalk, but my concern is I don't wanna create enemies over there.
But you don't need, well, like I said, I mean, you you don't need their approval because it's town land. It's not their land, so.
And then honestly, the other thing is. Uh.
Chances are, they would enjoy having a sidewalk to all that shopping. Chances are, they wouldn't, they would uh use it and.
This sounds very.
Safer.
It's it's a very, very, I sounds good idea, but to be honest, I'm just getting very concerned that we. I keep adding, these are all great ideas.
True.
I I I I'm my concern is that is it gonna be a viable? Practical, you know, at the end of the day, we are private company.
Sure, yeah.
And and this is a long roo- road. And it's just, I I'm very concerned about the, it is a very, very thin at this point.
Okay, so, um. All right. I think we're about just over two hours. Into this, um, does anyone have any other? I mean, I feel like we have a lot of open questions currently. Um and, you know, I know for me, I I need to sort of sift through a lot of this information myself, um so, I mean, it's not obvious. But I don't think we're really ready to make a decision tonight, nor am I ready to propose it here, um. I think I'm I'm good with my questions for at least the time being. Um does anyone else have any other questions with regards to the site plan that's proposed? Um I'm interested to see what the traffic layout looks like, but um does anyone else have any other?
Well, just going quick one, I want to, when is when is our next meeting? I I want, I I hate leaving things open. I wanna get. Applicants their decisions as soon as possible, and I understand that, um, when is our?
January twenty eighth.
Okay, yes. I know we have this.
So we have a hundred days to approve the variance, so chances are we're gonna need an extension on the. Uh ability to act on the variance.
Okay.
No, so I'm sorry, Mister Chair. So you're saying it's gonna even go beyond the next meeting? We have a lot. I mean, you don't have meeting in in December, right? This is in November, end of November. You don't have end of December meeting?
It's a Christmas holiday.
Is it? Yeah, I mean, the our typical schedule is the fourth Tuesday, which would be September twenty fourth. Um.
Even December twenty one?
December twenty fourth.
Hmm, is it possible to do one on the seventeenth? I don't wanna move any much plans, um.
And a board meeting.
So.
Um what about the seventh? The January seventh.
I've got a plan and board meeting. On the first and third uh two two days.
Okay, I I guess, I'm trying to.
I appreciate it. We really need it because I'm worried about the conservation permission. Uh I I don't think I'm gonna be getting another extension. So, and I think that only that wasn't much.
So I guess what I would say is that we don't need to make a decision on when we meet next right now.
Uh you do.
You do?
Yeah, yeah, you have to continue some public period.
Okay, um is there a date? Either the week of the sixteenth or? The week of the sixth, January, January fourteen?
Um I do have a meeting, but it should end. At six thirty. If we relate to you.
Um.
But I mean, I I guess it's. I don't know.
January second.
I love that on my Friday.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I wanna be in the week.
But it's gonna have to be certain off, not on Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, it's out of the long holiday.
Yeah. Uh what about Monday? With Monday, the sixth work?
Yeah, we work.
Monday, the sixth, January sixth work?
Sorry to throw a wrench in, I just am trying to.
No, no.
The longest possible.
We never, there's one board meeting, whatever, there's the Zoom or the recording capability. Um we've been meeting this for.
Uh yeah. Uh can we, uh so January sixth?
Yeah, cute.
Here, I've only done one. January sixth, three days.
Oh, sure.
All right. Um, okay, so I guess. Are there any other questions? Sure, so.
Okay, Mister Chair, I'm just speaking for myself.
Yeah.
I I don't want this to be an indication of like where I'm feeling personally right now. Uh I don't know. All I what I do know is if we were to hear from the applicant that they would be willing to do. Six or seven units of dedicated affordability without. With the age restriction, which I know isn't currently being proposed. That would, that would probably make me really persuaded to um approve this project. Uh without that, I don't know what my answer is right now. I wanna study it more. I've heard a lot of information processing. So I'm I'm not trying to put too much pressure on the applicant. I just wanna be fair about where I'm personally right now.
Yeah, I guess what I would say is, um, I probably need to do a little bit more thinking on this. Um but by our next meeting, you'll have a decent indication of where we're at.
I hope that we close next meeting. We we close in the next meeting. I I mean, don't mean to put pressure, but to be honest. It it could be for our question that the bottom line is, we're going from eighty eight to sixty six. And the bottom line is that all other bylaws are consistent with the independent assistance in the other. We are the only one, you know. And I just, you know, I I think my backup option, if you don't approve, is that I will. Then pursue with the town meeting that which I have talked about to eliminate that portion. Uh but I mean, I think going from eighty eight to sixty six is less impact on every resource. And not putting the memory care and nursing care is also less impact on resources. So I think this is far better plan.
Okay. Um, are there any other questions from the board um tonight?
I just had one more question on my notes that I had scribbled um when I was reviewing everything tonight. Were you adding um the second um access point for the underground garage? I know we didn't really dive into the building.
Yes, we we have.
You are, okay.
There's the exit, the fire department asked that too.
Yeah, yeah.
Pedestrian door.
Pedestrian, pedestrian door, but.
Oh.
Pedestrian door, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Pedestrian only, okay, it's not for a car.
No, the car intersection is only possible one way.
So it's one way for the car? And then two exits, different exits for that's.
Yeah. Or if something goes wrong, the uh fire department can come from the back. Into the garage, even though it's kind of open, but still.
Yeah.
And the elevator is going all the closed.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Can we ask a question after the meeting's closed? Is there a point to kind of have a conversation after the meeting?
So.
No.
You should, I mean, if you want to just talk to me, can we not that, just questioning at any time? If you wanna talk to the.
So the special, the special permit in the variance that we're seeking here, right? You refer to it in section twenty seven dash five.
Yes.
Twenty subsection seven, which is an assisted living facility.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna um verify that under your proposal right now. Is it an assisted living facility or is it an age restricted multifamily?
So. That's that's a, that's a good classification. I'm saying we are still under the same section. It's just that that, it it only in Northwood. If you look at Shoesbury, I'm gonna say that. Shoesbury does not require the license from executive office of elderly affairs. Is this bylaw, I think it's worth reading that that just, just one, two sentences, it's worth reading. Um. Okay. So town of Shoesbury, I'm gonna read out loud. A residential development subject to certificate certification under G L chapter nineteen D. Which provide room and board, uh provide directly by employees of the entity. Or through management with another organization with the entity may or may not control or own. So it covers your assisted and your independent by saying that, okay? And then da 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 da, I just, yours identical except. In Northwood, it says assisted living facility, a residence certified by the executive office of elderly affairs are successes. Under M G L C nineteen D, then exactly same. Under M G L C nineteen D to provide room and board and assistance with activities of daily living for three and more adult residents not related by a can uh. Uh uh the last.
Lot year.
Yeah. Uh or affinity to their care provider and to collect payments a third party, stuff like that. So the only difference, really difference between Northwood bylaw and the Shoesbury bylaw, and the same thing with the other towns. Is that you have a requirement for me to get a license from executive office of elderly affair. Whereas this is same chapter, same task, same everything, other towns don't require that. And I checked with the executive officer elderly affair. If you are not collecting directly and you're providing third party services, you do not thank me. And honestly, we could have gone on and built that and had, you know, this feeling, I don't know who, please, because I asked executive officer yesterday, we do not please. Whoever comes, we give another license. And by the way, they actually actually told me, there are certain facilities in Middleton and other towns. They actually come out with a license because they don't wanna manage license because that costs them more. So the trend is in that direction. So that's the reason we are just being offered. We believe we are still under the same. Uh Northwood, by the way, there is another bylaw in Northwood, and that is continuing care retirement community. There is another, it continues care at retirement communities. A managed development that provide housing, services and nursing care. Uh primarily to uh persons over fifty five years of age, which includes two and more of the three. This is similar. And it says it's assisted living, nursing, so this is also similar. But I mean, this does not talk about the the executive office of elderly affairs. So you could look at that. So these are the two bylaws deal, but.
Sure, yes, oh. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. Um actually to staff. When we look at the site plan, the staff features. And we give the approval. We give to approval for everything that's in this? Or is it coming to your office? And you're going through everything, all the bylaws to make sure. Uh it's it's in conformance. To give you an example, let's say they missed something. That was supposed to be granite or iron. And instead they put tumulus or PVC. If we've given them the blanket approval. Is is that what we're doing here?
Right, right.
And so how does that get picked up? Because at this point, it's not competent enough to do that.
Right, I see.
So, so that's what I'm doing with my review. That's what I'm doing with my review letter and Josh is here with his review letter is trying to point out inconsistencies.
Mm hmm.
And um so I make the comments and then depending upon his response. I may or may not include it as a condition of approval. So. What he may do is he may modify the site plan to address the comments. And then I'll I'll update my letter and I'll say. Fully um address this comment, no more comments, it's necessary. Or I may say, no, totally ignore this comments. I'm gonna ask the comment. Or I may say, no, totally ignore this comments, I'm gonna ask the commenting and make the comments again.
Right.
Or it could be something like this should be a condition.
I'm just concerned that as as the plans have changed and you've gone from. Septic to sewer back to septic, things change, and things change. And you know, in 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 some cases, I haven't gone over the bylaw, uh still learning as much. But you may be requiring iron in the ground and PVC may be a better alternative. But the bylaw still calls for the iron, so I I.
Yeah, so what I say as conditions is I say. You know, sewer and water services, uh well, water service shall be in compliance with DPW requirements. And then I say, you know, the septic system shall be in compliance with the requirements of the border health. Uh, and I still.
Hopefully everyone looks to see that they could follow it.
But anything that has to do with zoning or uh the rules and regs that this board is held to. Needs to be identified now. And complied with or you waive it, so if. If the regulations say that it's gonna be a vertical granite curb. And you approve this plan with um Cape Cod burn. He's gonna build Cape Cod burn.
That's a great example, may I just add a little to it, I know it's been long, so. Uh, Scott Chapman here has actually brought several. Questions, so everybody kind of all departments have reviewed it. And actually, though he can't bother, everybody reviewed, gave us, and that's the reason we actually updated our plans. Because there's lots of things which are dealing with engineering and sewer and septic, they have been reviewed. Like they told us to move the the water line, they have told us to move the with the hydrantage, they they told us the the granite curb. It's in there, so these things have been looked at, very funny.
They they they've never looked at, it's verified, and it gets changed in the field day and every day.
But that's what we go out and inspect for.
I'm sorry?
That's why we go out and inspect for it. We've had people change trees, move trees.
Right.
Okay, um. There's some things we can't control, like where um National Grid decides to put their transformer on a property.
Right, correct.
You know, and if the site plan review has it coming in on the east side and. National Grid says it's coming in on the west side, you're not gonna argue with National Grid. But in terms of any kind of septic system being done according to state regulations, we have inspectors for that. We also have for the sewer. Um, Laurie and I and the town engineer, we do go out. Um, throughout the process to make sure that the trees are where they belong. Right handed kind of granite is there, whether it's a rumble strip or whether it's a berm to control traffic. That's what we do.
I have a half a million dollar bond with Shrewsbury, I'm doing ten, that whole subdivision, and I'm sure you have a bond too, so. These bonds don't get released if I don't do things that I already made. So.
So I guess then to allow some of Jack's concerns, like. At some point between now and the next meeting, I assume that. They will be able to provide a plan that is up to your.
Yeah, I mean, I I already started reviewing today, the plan that was dropped off last week. And um, you know, there are some comments I'm asking again because, you know, I didn't feel like you addressed them. And then there are other things that are completely addressed and no longer an issue. So I will give you folks an updated letter. Then when you see my updated letter, you may opt to revise again, I I don't, I don't know.
There's a lot of trees.
Or, you know, there are some things that we're not gonna agree to uh agree with, so like I'm gonna make the comments again about the sidewalk. I'm gonna make the comments again about the street widening. And ultimately, the ZBA is gonna decide whether they're gonna make you do it, even if you don't want to. Or uh whether they're gonna give you a prepass, I mean.
Uh, maybe we can figure out a some collaborative solution.
So.
Thank you. By the way, Laurie, but you you agree that there are a lot of things you have said. And this has improved tremendously, but you haven't seen the last plan yet.
Yeah, I mean, I I appreciate the fact that you did uh like bike racks and, you know, the dog park thirteen hundred square feet, I'm concerned about the size. Um, but uh you made the, you made the effort, you got the.
No other facility has a dog park. We will be the first one.
Yeah, you you might wanna skip the dog park and do a bigger patio, cause thirteen hundred square feet, I've got experience with dog parks. If you don't get them sufficient room, then they could be fights because they're on top of each other, so we wanna avoid that.
Are you gonna allow pets in this facility?
That was a very good question, and we thought when you read the comment, because not, we will be allowing uh small pets. After she asked the question, we had a thing about it.
Um, alright, so I mean, this is a public meeting and there are two people currently online, I don't know if um. Patrick or Scott want to comment, but I think. There's no one else in the room from the public, but if they do, uh if you could just please raise your hand, um if you do want to comment. Um. The interim, I guess the question for the board is. Um, are there any questions for today and is everyone comfortable with? January sixth at seven P M. Uh, for our next meeting uh with regards to this case, and I would assume that this would be the only case on the topic.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay. Uh, so I don't see other hand raised there, um so.
Do we need to make a list of what we're asking the um town council now, or did you?
Laurie said yes, yeah.
Yeah, I I think the only thing had to do with the uh age. Restriction, yeah, you told me all, anything else that one you'd ask town council?
Oh, it sounds like my question is no, but if there's any other creative legal way our town council can help us with. It would help help us not have to count units or something, it sounds like no, but I'm. I'm trying to. Think outside the box if we can, but. Yeah.
I think I know that um Laura, you know, and our attorney general are very um anti discrimination against families, so that was. I'm concerned with the age restriction, any age restriction, any laws that might be coming down the pipeline, if you could ask. And not just to look at current laws on the books, but anything that's. Um, being drafted.
That's the reason I cited that law, that law should be centered.
I guess just John's comments with regards to age restriction conditions impacts. Uh, outside of this case, um potential. You know, it falls, I guess, like what what you know, what do we need to think about, what are the condition for age?
Yeah. This might be another way of saying what the chair just said, but like it, uh. That it's already indicated that if we remove the age restriction, which I don't know if I'm in favor of or not. Then they may be willing to do the ten percent, um so I wanna know what things should we be considering that might have not already, if there isn't an age restriction?
Well, if there isn't an age restriction, then. He's had sixteen units for the development. Unless he wants to do a forty B. Because that's um. That's what the zoning says, or he asked for a variance to do more than those units, cause right now. He can do a multifamily development by special permit. But it's not close to being the density that he wants.
I think if you remove, you mean, they're committed.
Yeah, well, anyway, like those are the. That's that's partly partly answers my question, yeah, those are the questions that I have, because like I said, I'm trying to think of.
Um, and then I guess the other question is just kind of. And and not saying I disagree, but like just the the. Order of operations in terms of making decisions on use variance versus extending uh. The other decisions, just wanna make sure that you get it. Stuff over there. Um.
I'm sorry, Laurie, should it, would it be prudent to ask the uh legal counsel if this is really a used variance or more like a. The minimum, the, you know, like a administrative change, because uh when I see this whole thing, the only thing is executive office of elderly affairs license. Uh, that's, but it's the same function.
It doesn't fit in Arizona.
If if you remove the age restriction, then how can you save it?
No, 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 I didn't say it's a question, sorry.
Yeah.
I said in the assisted living bylaws.
Yeah.
You have that licensing requirement.
Mm hmm.
If you take the licensing requirement, everything is all set. So I'm saying other towns don't have that licensing requirement.
Right.
So, and honestly, my humble opinion, either it was verbal or I have seen somewhere in the past when this sentence was not there. I mean, we didn't see it, but. When I started this project, I started with the independent assisted with all under the same. So I think you may wanna ask that, does this?
Well, the only way around that is to change the definition at town meeting. So you can go that route, um and change it at town meeting. But that means, you know, you'd have to wait until after town meeting and. Of course, the attorney general asks you to approve by law changes, so that's a, that event delay.
And and if if I may, sure, yeah, uh not to predict how a town meeting would outcome would be, but. My experience, my limited experience with town meetings is the same concerns about affordability are gonna come up at town meeting. Um, my guess would be, so just something.
Yeah, I mean, if I were to write a bylaw that would allow this, and you know, it sounds like a great idea, but I can tell you right now, I would absolutely. Put in an affordability requirement, so that would be part of the bylaw.
Yeah, but then you give some other relaxation like Vesper does, Vesper has that. But then the other relaxation, the sewer requirement on this, but then you would be able to build like eighty eight units or more. You know, units on those type of things, and that's another discussion you have, I honestly think I wouldn't be against ten percent if I had eighty eight units, for example. My concern is that we already going, and I did the math, we are ten already on that.
I'm sure.
And and just.
In the sixty eight strip by the.
Yeah.
Well, if you're not allowed, you're ten, how about five percent? You know, reduce it in half, so then it's still something.
Uh, we are not ready to make the C N right now, I mean, right? Have you ready to wait and see it tonight? I mean, that's the question, I mean, maybe somebody take a bullet if somebody's willing to make a decision right now.
Want to do, what, willing to what, make a decision?
Yeah.
We're not making a C N tonight.
Yeah.
We're not, right?
We are.
Right, so I think this is something to think of, think about.
Yeah. Okay, um, so I guess at this point, anyone has any other questions, Seth or anything, I think we have some open items, so we can kind of knock out, took some with the chop there. Um, otherwise, um, I would extend a motion to continue the meeting to. January sixth at seven P M.
Second, second.
That's a move. Um, all those in favor? Of continuing the meeting to January seventh, six P M?
Sure.
Six.
Six.
Seven P M, twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, yeah. Seven P M.
That was a unanimous decision, thank you guys very much.
I I really wanna thank you guys, but your consideration of special.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay.
Um, alright. Uh, you guys need like five minutes break?
Yes.
Uh, you can.
Yeah, that one's fine.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm gonna take all those and we'll distribute it to the members, so, see you.
It's a decision.
Thank you.
If you want.
Thank you, thank you for coming in, very helpful.
Hey, sorry, I got too long.
So why don't we?
Yes.
Why is this?
Well, that's the board, you know.
About you and the board discuss other cases right now.
No, and and then I.
Uh. Even like. The one by law.
That I'm explaining, so.
I think I do.
That's the one, like, as soon as we just did like shoot, I mean, I just.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we did that.
See, I guess I'm I'm confused, because they walk out.
Thank you.
They don't know what's happening, so they don't know what to do, they don't know.
That's one. Yeah, and this is one they.
Okay, give it some.
Laurie calls him wrong, so.
Right, I mean, Laurie does too. Laurie does so much for this board, I get up, when I sat on the Z P A before, we didn't have a Laurie. And we had, you know.
Cases are easier to cut, yeah, if it's, you know, right maybe smoking for extra ten feet, you know, okay. Discussion is usually pretty quick, but I I think what we found is that it's not a little second. I mean, we can change it up.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, I think it's also like. If you have people waiting, you kind of just. Do the case, close the case and get that meeting now.
But your quick cases go. Quicker than start at all.
Yeah, when you you got through the three cases and the refilling, that's that's something, but I think.
Yeah, I guess that's where my.
Yeah.
Question sort of generates from.
Sure, yeah.
Then we're done with those, out of it. Moving on, and this one's gonna take its time anyway.
Yeah.
Um.
We could have, yeah.
I've just. I just ask questions.
I don't really have a preference, to be honest, it's just that.
I'm a coin. Just cause things were always done a certain way, that's the thing, they always have to be done, so.
I agree. I can see doing it that way, and then if it closes, we. Idiot Jake is over here and ends up having ten more minutes of discussion than thought he was going to, I don't get that idea, should have. I'm not saying, well.
I've been this meeting in a long time.
No, that's what we were talking, forty eight minutes, yeah, that was quite, that was good.
No, five is the.
Oh, welcome back. Good for example.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah, welcome back.
I'm not fooling the morning.
Morning.
How long were you over there?
Uh, ten.
And just enough for the body to serve adjusting, and you went.
We're in. Uh. Paris, Florence and Rome.
Oh, what's wrong with Shreveport?
It'd be Paris.
Oh, nice.
That Florence. I know.
Florence says easier to walk around.
Rome, Rome was just the, just New York.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Did you get to the Vatican?
Hard?
You go to the Vatican?
Yes.
It's pretty impressive place.
It is.
Lots of beautiful art. The other thing, if you look at a building that was built five hundred years ago.
Oh, yeah, it looks like it's finished, yes. And it looks like it was just.
Great.
Alright, um. Do you wanna go over, have a case you presented, so we can start the fifty inch lane? Um, so I guess we're looking for.
Eight point three.
Eight point three?
Yeah.
I mean, the uh, the penny.
So that was the total, like I said, today, the party, our food, the thing, they just combined it together, so I think that'd be some.
Could be rounded up to like nine.
Yes.
That's what I highlighted, because I wondered if you guys would be willing to go all the way up to the inch instead of. Having this guy go out.
I don't think he wants to go up there, I mean.
Well, that's what he has built survey for. With the engineers, but it it's always good to give a little bit of fudge because. You know, the concrete contract you do on the foundation, he has a budget, just a little bit.
Yep.
He's got that luxury, you know, it's, so it's always good to give him just a little bit of wiggle room.
We pick up ten feet?
What is he asking for?
Eight point three?
Eight point three.
Give nine.
Yeah, okay, um, so yeah, I think it's tradition. Uh, what I would just say is, uh, you know, he's going out towards the street, kind of going away from the neighbors. Um, I think he addressed some of the top. Uh, uh. Sound right, typography issues, um, I think they were brought up. If I um having a retaining wall there, um. So, yeah, I don't see an issue with anything, I don't think that there's really that big of an impact, um.
Yeah, no letters of objection, um, I mean, it's fairly common in this neighborhood, it reminds me of the Northgate neighborhood, it's a lot of just.
Yes.
All a lot of. Just wanna get the house a little bit bigger. No increase in traffic.
If they use. You know, comment, comment in the area to have exceptions, I think.
Yeah.
Improving, improving the routine.
Yeah.
Cool.
Did you make a case for financial hardships? Can't move. Yeah, can move and stuff, no.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Alright, um, in terms of uh, conditions, we don't really worry.
I have two.
Two? Oh, very, yeah, 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 so a grading plan and have the um. Uh, building inspector review, which obviously is standard, um, stuff that's done after decision, yeah, so. But.
Um, can I make a comment now or after, though, I I I do want either. I'd like, well, maybe just the minutes, I I don't think that matters, so this is, sorry to wax. Legal on this, I actually don't think that a variance was required, I think that a special permit could have been done. And this is just my reading of eight twenty B, that we may grant a special permit to extend a non-conforming structure. If we did make some determinations, I maybe, and I think staff might think, or have taken the interpretation that. Because it is increasing the non-conformity, a variance is required under O three O. Um, and I'm happy if I'm in the minority, I'm granting, I'm granting it to variance or a, or a, I think all the. If it were presented as a special permit, all the factors for a special would have been met, and I would have granted a special permit. So ultimately, the decision is the same, but I don't think that they should have had to meet the requirements of variance. I I view special permit as easier to get, and I think they, because when, this is my opinion. I think that, and it is, the zoning boards. We can interpret our own bylaws in the first instance, and if the viewing court views us, they will give some deference to our interpretation of our own laws. Um, but I think that when you read um O two O B. And O three O together, it says, except as provided in O two O. O two O stands on its own, and we can grant a special permit to extend a non-conforming structure if we find. That it doesn't, it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure, and blah, 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 as long as we follow that, which I think is all here. We can grant a special permit, period, variance says, except as provided. In that, in other words, if we don't reach that conclusion, then a, an extension of a non-conforming structure has to um. Get a variance, so I I think that if we had found that for the special permit, factors were met, it could have been granted as a special permit. Sorry to get into that, I just think ultimately, they future wise, it makes it easier for an applicant to get, who needs something like this, I need an extra five feet of the. Encroachment that I'm already doing, um, it's easier to present as a special permit, and it's easier for us to grant. Because we don't have to deal with topography and shape and. Soil conditions, um, which I think are weak in this case, right? Um, so, um, and the other, just really quickly, I know it's late, uh, the town amended O two O A. In twenty nineteen, and again in twenty, or twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and again in twenty twenty one. Um, it made some changes, but that's for uses, and I think especially when you compare the use changes to the lack of any changes on the structure. Um, 'cause the use changes do say that it has to be a similar or less non-conforming use under O two O A. So I'd agree with that, if we're talking about a use. But B doesn't say it has to be a similar or less non-conforming for us to go under B, and so unless the bylaw changes. My interpretation, speaking for myself, is that this could have been done as a special permit, that's just one person's opinion, I'm gonna support it either way.
Okay.
Sorry about that, it matters to me, and if anyone cares what I think, it should have been a special permit.
Okay, okay. I appreciate your. So I guess. Anyone else have any other comments, if you are since? So, is there a motion, Brad?
Yeah, I made a motion to grandparents to allow an encroachment of nine feet into the thirty foot front setback for the construction rendition. The residential C district on the property located sixty eight Shady Lane Avenue. Map seventy six, parks forty three, due to the shape of the lot, subject to findings of fact one through nine, and conditions A B. And then adding the condition of, for the grading plan as well.
Okay, second.
Which was named by Brad, and second name by Susie, uh, all those in favor?
Okay.
Alright. Alright, great. Um, so moving to the next one. Um, one thirty East Main Street, um. So. We confirmed, uh, before the meeting, or before the. Presentation, that a special final cycle approval was not needed, um. So we're really talking about a special permit and a special permit in the ground, not overly a district, um, you know. I'll put my initial opinion on this. Pretty straightforward, auto glass repair, um, it seems like the building is large enough to house. All the materials, the materials themselves are not overly toxic. Um, and if they need to do, most of their uh, window replacements will be done offsite through their old hands. Uh, but they do have a area that you can, um. Do wind chills indoors, which I think is is really great, um, they have the the setup, they have all the functional setup there. Um, to sort of minimize all the impacts, whether you're talking from groundwater, um, use. Uh, it's a minimal sort of impact in terms of use, right, replacing uh uh uh, which you know, doesn't require. Um, you know, loud machinery, right, it's drills that anyone, any of us can do and using them, you can. Uh, so I don't really have an issue with this, um. Anyone else have any other? Comments? Susie?
Yeah, I'm filling in the empty building spot. Um, and. They didn't have any issue with, you know, it's not gonna be a loud business, they're gonna be doing it indoors. Or going out into the world, um, and. Um, that's. Uh, no drums or tanks, um, everything's gonna be stored inside, I liked that they were locking the um dumpster. Um. And I, that was everything that um I have down in my notes. No vehicles outside, no work done outside too, like, and the vehicles would be in inside and parked overnight, so those were all the things that um I liked from the presentation.
Um, oh, Paul, you mentioned earlier, um, condition for seven to seven, if you want someone to add that? So you can say seven to five, then by appointment on Saturday, but.
Yeah, I think typically we've done, we get added. Hours of operation, I don't know how anyone else feels on the board, but, you know, sort of just like a. Uh. Break glass in case of emergency type of things that they're not doing. Window glass repair, two AM or whatever it is, it doesn't seem like they would, but. Um, I think typically, we've always added, it seems like hours of operation for businesses that aren't. Don't fit the neighborhood, which is, you know, fortunately, this has been around for forty years, but, um. Been surrounded by residential zone, but I don't think it impacted, so I'd be open to adding it, I don't know how anyone else feels, but. Typically, we get some leeway in terms of the hour, so seven AM to eight P M would be fine with me. Um, you know, Monday to Friday, Monday to Saturday, whatever it is, so. You know, somebody uh, concerns with that?
No concern, if you have it, I wouldn't. Yeah, like if you was opposed to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Seven to seven, I'd say just keep it seven to seven, that's who you asked.
Yeah, that's fine.
From day through Saturday, you want me to add that?
Sure.
I think the intent is Monday through Friday, but let's say they have an emergency on Saturday, that way we don't run into an issue.
I think, I think there is a.
Right, yeah, Saturday, right.
Yeah. Um, yeah, anyone else have any other comments or questions? And I think, you know, we kind of went through all the other conditions. Um, that were laid out in terms of the chemicals, um, the no exterior storage. Uh, it seemed like they had no.
No impact to groundwater.
Was that?
No impact to groundwater.
Right, exactly, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit to extend or alternate conforming use, and special permit in the groundwater protection overly district. To allow the operation of glass replacement business on the subject property located at one thirty East Main Street, Building A, map forty seven. Parcel sixteen, subject to findings of fact one through fifteen, in conditions A through H, as well as the addition. And as well as the additional condition, um, hours of operation, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday. Seven A M to seven P M, yeah, not P M to A M.
Second.
Alright, Brad in motion, and second is by Susie, all those in favor? To approve, alright, great. Um, alright, last case, um, on the agenda is twenty seven Somalpon Road, Unit C. Um, so, I mean. I think for me. It is concerning, um, that he does not have a well-to-own-out plan for the gray water. Um, that. Uh, his business will be dealing with. Um, but I think ultimately, what is in front of us is whether or not, um, you know, he should be granted a use variance for. Um, you know, a home office or home occupation within a condo. Um, and it doesn't seem like the impact on his neighbors is gonna be that great. Um, because a lot, I mean, all of this business is gonna be done offsite, um, so, I mean. I guess with regards to the gray water, I mean, I think you talked about a condition for, um. At least having Bob and Scott sort of beat our secondary check in terms of the plan, right? Having them uh submit a plan of what he plans to do with that, is sort of like our. Um, catch-all to that issue, or at least my issue, um, and I think that that's, that was a good uh suggestion there, but. Anyone else have any other? Questions or?
On the face of it, as far as just trying to allow a business essentially inside of. Uh, condo or multi, multi-unit uh structure, I'm surprised, I'm not sure it hasn't come up before, uh, to the board, but, uh. Yeah, I think it's gonna be a common question forward during the time.
Yeah, and I think, I do think, um, you know, like, we've had other. Dogs, specific businesses come before us in the past, um, but I feel like this seems like the least impactful. Sure, so we have no dogs staying there overnight, everything's done offsite, um, you know. Like, I mean, we've had other cases before where it's like, dogs are gonna be at a place, you gotta figure out who's gonna be staying overnight, and you know, all that.
Yeah.
Uh, complications, but it doesn't exist here, so, um, yeah, sorry.
Oh, uh, I like the condition that you mentioned about how rewarded. Plan gets submitted to the D P W and, um, building inspector, subject to their approval. For disposal of the gray water, which I agree is kind of outside of us, but they are asking us, this business does barely involve that risk, and I don't wanna be the one blamed for. Having gray water dumped into a storm, which seems to clearly acknowledges it can do, um.
Well, I think that that is pretty illegal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't be into very illegal, yeah. So anyway, so I think we've made that record, and I I would like that as a condition, from my perspective. There's one quick thing, I mean, I, it's not for us to decide today, but uh, when we do, when is our meeting with the bylaw committee or come?
It hasn't been scheduled yet, we're, we're not really ready.
Okay, well.
Uh, we just started talking about Tony.
Things to do, just making a mental note, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be quite in favor of. Because the reason this is coming as a use variance as opposed to a special permit, if this were a owner occupied detached single family, it still would have just been a special permit. Which would have been pretty easy to be conditioned, but. I wouldn't be opposed to amending that bylaw to not be limited to only single detached dwellings, but also including multifamily or townhouses. It, that's just my two cents, um, I I think generally, the kinds of things that you're going to have, happen, there isn't a. Big material difference I can think of that's going to be if it was a single founder, it's like, or a, pretty like, or a down like this.
Can I make just the?
Yeah, sure.
I'm, I'm probably speaking out of line, it's not. But. Two variants for this person. He's in a condo complex with four of the condo owners. Now you're gonna be obligated to give him four more of these variances for the same type of product.
Yeah, I mean. My two cents is, we shouldn't have to give him a various, they should be able to run that business that involves playing on a computer in your home. That's my two cents.
True, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, once, once you let that horse out of the barn in terms of. You know, single family detached owner occupied. Um, you know, every condo owner is gonna be coming. For some sort of a, a thing, you know, it, what about apartments, we've, I've rejected in my in interpretations. People wanna run a business out of an apartment, like the Avalon. It's, it's not a lot of the book, you know, I was given the option to appeal. But I don't think anybody has.
Does Avalon even allow that, though? Because like, if there's the risk of people coming and going, that's a security issue to the building.
It's not my problem.
Well, Avalon might not. It's their problem.
Well, yeah, and obviously Avalon's gonna have their own, but, you know, just like those wise, you folks asked. If they have, um, kind of approval from the condo association, from the other four unit owners.
I I did like that this business was, um, part of a franchise. So a lot of it's already set up, he already has a system, a plan kind of set up, um, so. And if he chooses to use the app, it just seems like it's more stable, so it's not kind of figuring it out as it goes along. Um. But that was something that struck me. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, one we're commenting, this is totally, um. What helps in this application to, uh, our, and I appreciate the comments from our, um, inspector. Uh, it really helps in this application that there is a letter, and I granted, this variance is gonna run with the land, and the. Neighbors may change, and I get that, but at least we do have, that he's made the effort to, with his three current neighbors. For them to say, we're good with this, and I think that makes this application a lot stronger than maybe it would have been. In the absence of that, given the proximal neighbors, um, who are gonna be dealing with looking at that panel. So I I I do consider that, um, that's something that is present here that may not be present in another case in the future, um.
One of the things I do advise the applicants, 'cause they come to me to make sure the application's complete, before they have, they make formal application. Is they say, what else can I do to, you know, I said, well, if you can get letters of support from the interactive bodies, okay. That may, may help the Z B A, because I explain to these people, the Z B A is there to break the law for your special situation. Okay, that's the, what you're, that's what you're asking for. And if you're not gonna make a ruffle with the neighbors. It may help, on a comfort level.
Yeah.
So that's typically the advice I give.
You know, I bet. And that's where I was going, you just said what I just said earlier, is they presented a letter with signatures on it. That was, that came in from them, that means nothing, that's not an independent letter that was presented to this board. If they had sent them directly to us. Independently, then at least we have something different, but I could have taken this paper, put four signatures on it and given it to you. You don't know where that comes from, and we can't, we can't give any validation to that. Mr. Chair, I mean, I I take the point. I, I still give it some weight, I don't give it infinite weight, and uh, sure, he could be forging signatures, that's a crime. And uh, if one of the neighbors who was notified. Through the, of other notifications, would have gotten notification, um. Says the Z B A was defrauded, when they made this decision, they probably have some relief that they can pursue. So I I get that they could be committing forgery, um, I just don't think it's that likely.
But what if it's a hundred unit complex, and they only sent a letter from eight?
So.
You don't know, it's, you're, you're, again, you're making the assumption, and you don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's important that we have these meetings in public, so the public can. Listen and go re-review it, and if we've got something wrong, tell us about it, um. And I totally understand what you're saying, and that's a risk that we need to weigh, in my case. I I I don't give a zero rate, just because it wasn't submitted independently.
Yeah, yeah, I guess what I would say is, um. This use of home occupation for a business office, again, very low impact for the use. Um, we have conditions on there, and there are conditions that are in the bylaws that allow it, just, you know. Not more than twenty-five percent of the existing gross floor area, dwellings should be towards the home occupation. Um, no traffic shall be generated by home occupation, anyone, what will be expected. Not more than one. Not more than one commercial motor vehicle should be parked in the driveway, I mean, these are conditions that they're putting on this variance that I feel like. Quickly reduce a lot of that impact, um, I am concerned with sort of the opening of the floodgates of the world, um. But, you know, I do think that this is a unique. You know, the place in the fact that it is only five units, it's not Avalon as a hundred, or whatever it is, um. And it's, it's also a unique business, you know, I mean, this entire business model is off the set, right? In terms of like that dog. Yeah, I, I'm leaning towards being in favor of this with the conditions that are laid out, but.
I would, I'm in favor as well, but I, I would stress, I mean, if we could stress the traffic issue, I, I just think to kind of limit traffic flow is key in this decision. Uh, from, from a safety perspective.
Yeah, and there, I mean, you know, just, uh. No traffic shall be generated by the home occupation in greater volume that would normally be expected in a residential neighborhood or any area. Totally off-street, meaning like, you can't turn this business into, hey, all the dogs come to my house, right, I think that that. Is not how this is.
Yeah, and that's, we should definitely stress that, that it's not happening on the premises.
This is on parking my car here.
Yeah.
And running my laptop in my, my house. Right, I mean, if he turns it into, um, bringing all the dogs back to my house for, you know, well, that's not allowed. I think that that is.
That's true, you were talking about gray water and like.
The only thing I have to be careful of, he may pick up three more customers from his neighbors, and so he wouldn't have to go anywhere to groom the dogs.
And I guess that may won't have an issue, right?
I have a feeling that's already coming out.
Uh, probably there, it would escape for a little. So, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor with the conditions, um, and someone else comes.
Well, if, if one of the neighbors complains, like, to Lori. Or called town hall and said, my neighbor's running this business, and there's a lot of traffic all of a sudden, and dogs everywhere, like, that's. Why do we have Bob anyway?
Yes, I will say, five to five unit complex. Your four, six.
And they may move out, new people may move in.
Um, okay. Are there any other comments or?
I'd like to make a motion to grant a variance to allow operation of a home occupation business office for a mobile dog grooming business. Within a townhouse on the property located at twenty seven Solomon Palm Road. Unit C, map thirty, parcel twenty-nine, in the residential C district, and groundwater protection overlay district twenty-two. Subject to findings of fact, one through nine, and conditions A through Y, additional condition. That the applicant submits a gray water disposal plan to the building inspector and a DPW, subject to their.
I know, I'm sorry, I totally screwed up on that, it's findings of that one through ten, and conditions A through H, I must have been asleep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that one from ten to conditions A through H, the additional. Uh, the H should include the, yeah, you got, yeah, H is the one, it's a new condition.
I, I don't know which one's the newest one, but.
Oh, I, you see, I have that, your first one. I have that as a finding of fact, you want me to move that down?
No, that's fine.
I'm sorry. Need some time second it now?
Yeah.
Uh, so, a motion would be brought, seconded by Suzie, uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Um. So the next thing is just a consideration of the minutes from September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, um. This was, um. Yeah, so, uh, six, seven, three, uh, was everyone had a chance?
Sure, I have a, I'm making a motion to the US Simmons, uh, the consideration is from September twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, as submitted.
Okay.
Uh, a motion made by Brad, seconded by Suzie. Um, all those in favor? Um, so, I get on development form, uh, December seventh, uh, uh, seven. September eleventh at seven PM.
And also there is a survey, um, so it's going to go out to all the board members, it's going to be available tomorrow. It's a survey, monthly, like, survey. Uh, that CMR PC did for us, so I'm going to send you a link to it tomorrow, if you guys could. Fill it out as soon as possible, it's simple, I, I think it's like eleven questions, and kind of fill in the appropriate box. Um, so if you could fill it out by, say, next Tuesday, so then you'll have the opportunity to analyze. The survey results, and of course, uh, like, we can advance the meeting, that'd be awesome.
You said this last time?
No, I'm going to send it to you tomorrow, it's not live yet.
Gotcha.
Uh, but it should be tomorrow.
Okay, um, I believe that Mitch and Carrie are going to chair that meeting, what is the format? Alright, great.
Yeah, we're having a meeting early next week to discuss.
Nice, nice. So, our next meeting is. Senior Center. Our next meeting is January sixth.
Yeah.
Uh, and then after that, it's January twenty-eighth. Um. Anyone else have any other? Suzie?
Um, on December seventh, at five PM, is the North Row Annual Tree Lighting. In honor of Neil, Neil Ellsworth, so if everyone would like to attend, the North Row Fifth Grade Course will be staying, the honor guard will be there. Um, our select board, and some members, I don't remember how many yet, um. I believe, um, our new town administrator will be there, we will have cocoa pizza from our row host pizza. It's always a very festive, bold, um, time, but it, it'll be fun, and you'll be able to see Lake Street and my trees still standing right now. And the DPW is wonderful, and it's facing a lot of lights on it, so it'll look beautiful. And then, um, I'm still, I still have one more. One more thing, on December thirtieth, at approximately, I believe, five thirty PM, we will be having the menorah lighting. Um, also in the same spot as the tree lighting, so, um, we're putting that together, and, uh, more information to come, so.
Uh, so your time for the tree lighting?
Five PM. And it's, it, the North Row, um, children's course is, um, the fifth grade from every elementary school, so.
I'll be there either way.
Yeah, perfect, yes, yes, we, we all will be there, everything.
Anyone have anything else?
Angels.
Hope everyone's alright on Thursday. Um. I love this, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Alright, welcome, fair.
Alright, alright, great, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.